Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are in session. Welcome to March 1st, 2022. It is still March 1st, 2022. This is our afternoon session. We had a morning workshop with the City of Holmes Beach, and now we are in a special meeting of the Manatee County Commission. We are going to start this meeting, as we do every meeting, we are going to start by honoring God. And we have today with us Ann Crawford from the 518 Group, which Ann informed me is a small group of believers located in downtown Bradenton. So she will lead us in the invocation. If you're able at this time, please stand.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we invite your Spirit here today, March 1st, 2022, as these men and women gather to discuss matters pertaining to the Manatee County. You, oh God, chose these men and women to steward the welfare of their individual districts for the collective good of the men, women, and children who reside in the county of Manatee. Today I ask that you, God, give the commissioners wisdom and unity as they convene. We know through your word that land and people are important to you. And you tell us in the Book of Acts that you, our God, determined the times set for all mankind and the exact places where they should live. Thank you for placing us in the great state of Florida and in Manatee County. It is my prayer today that our county commissioners would encourage one another to do the right thing in their individual districts so that it would benefit the land and the people of Manatee County. If we don't fight and lean into the things that are righteous, then in God's eyes, we will fail. And what does God ask of us? To act justly and to love mercy and to walk humbly with your God. Thank you, God, for hearing our prayer today. I'd like to close by reading scripture and making it personal by inserting your position here in Manatee County. It's from Psalm 106, verse 3. How blessed are the Manatee County commissioners who keep justice, who practice righteousness at all times? In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. Okay, if you can be seated. We had a pledge of allegiance this morning. I think that suffices for the full 24 hours. So we, Commissioner Bellamy has requested we have a pledge of allegiance. So if you're able, please stand, and we will honor our nation. Actually, I would like Charlie Bishop, Army, Air Force veteran, to lead us in the pledge today.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Today's meeting, we're going to start off with the first agenda item. We'll turn to Dr. Hopes to introduce this capital improvement update presentation. Dr. Hopes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and we have a full agenda for you this afternoon. And just so everyone knows, Charlie Bishop also had a birthday on Sunday. So happy birthday, Charlie. So, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first, the first item on the agenda is an update on the capital improvement plan. And first up will be Wendell Gartner. He is your financial advisor, and he will update us. And he just asked that you don't ask him what the future looks like. So with that, Jan, would you go ahead, would you like to go ahead and introduce our experts?
Sure. Everyone, please welcome Wendell Gartner. Wendell is the Senior Managing Director of Public Resources Advisory Group. He's with, been with us almost four years, I believe. And he can't, we asked that he come before us. As we talk about the CIP, the economy is changing so much, we wanted him to give you an update on the interest rates and kind of where we are right now. Wendell, I'll give it to you.
Okay. And how do I turn this on? Can you put the slides out? Okay, great. Thank you. And as Jan said about two weeks ago, she asked me to give you a presentation based on a presentation that I made her.
Thank you. And a lot's happened in the past two weeks. So in this presentation, we'll talk a little bit about what we had as kind of a basis in mid-February, because I think that's important to show where the economy and interest rates were going. But we'll also talk a little bit about the past two weeks and the impact of the war in Ukraine. First, I wanted to just kind of briefly talk about what the municipal bond market is, because obviously that's the interest rates that affects the county most directly. And the muni market is relatively small compared to the rest of the bond markets in the, in the country. It is about $3.9 trillion, and that compares to the corporate bond market of $10.6 trillion and the treasury market of $22 trillion. Relatively small, has a lot of issuers. There's 50,000 approximately issuers in the country. There's about a million securities. Compare that to the corporate market, which has about 43,000 securities. You'll see that it's very, it's small but very fragmented. The daily trading volume is about 12.4 billion. The corporate trading value is about 38.9, so it's about a third of that. And the new issuing volume during the year, this past year was 480, 480 billion compared to 2.3 trillion in the corporate market. As the part of the market, Florida typically ranks fourth in new issue volume. And 2021's volume in Florida was 18.1 billion. That was about 15% less than 2020's volume. Nationally, the volume was only down about 1% from last year. So because of its size, the municipal bond rates are impacted not only by overall interest rates, but by liquidity, supply and demand, and current and future tax rates. So kind of as a big picture of where we were in mid-February, even at that point, there was threats of Russian invasion, and there was continued talk of inflation coming in higher. So it was a very volatile market even last, beginning of the month. The market is pricing in interest rate increases to combat inflation. So at the March meeting, we're expecting there's a 90% chance of a 50 basis point increase on the short end, reaching about 1% in July of 2022. We've seen MMD yields rise sharply this year. MMD is the municipal market daily. It is the proxy for the municipal index. All the other markets are priced off of treasuries, but as a tax exempt market, it doesn't price directly off of treasuries, and therefore the MMD is the benchmark that the industry prices. And you'll see just in the middle of February, MMD, the 10-year was up 21 basis points. The 30 was also up 21, the highest it's been since May of 2020. Supply is manageable, but there is, you know, some, some concern about interest rate hikes. One thing that is a little different this year is the fund flows. The, the flows of money into tax exempt municipal bonds has been constant outflows, and this is the first time it's happened since 2020. And so the three weeks before mid-February was a $4.5 billion decrease. Just a quick update, as of today, obviously last week, Russia invaded Ukraine. That has made volatility even higher. On a short-term basis, it's actually helped tax exempt rates. Typically, when there is volatility or risk concerns in the broader market, treasuries and munis are seen as a safe haven, and there is often a flight to quality. So since two weeks ago, we've seen municipal rates drop about 11 basis points. This is an index that's posted each night, so this is last night's index. The expected read at noon today for this index was another three to five basis point drop in rates. There's still, the, the market is still watching some technicals because we are pressured by supply and demand. March and April typically are among the weakest months for muni demand because there's an outflow as people liquidate to pay taxes. And they expect, the market expects that to be even bigger this year because of tax-induced selling to take advantage of gains in the stock market. The withdrawals right now are close to $8 billion for the year. And also, this month has a lower inflow from principal and interest payments. In the market, January and July are often strong months because a lot of bonds have those principal and interest payments. When they get paid, investors often look to put that into the market. In Florida particularly, October is a big one since there are a lot of principal maturities on October. So this is just a picture of the MMD yield curve. Originally, we placed three lines on here with the, the basically current, six months ago and a year ago. And then the dotted line is the one we added for rates as of yesterday. And then you can see them on the chart. In mid-February, the 30-year, the index was at a 209. Yesterday, the index was at a 189, so that was the 11 basis point increase, decrease in rates. But if you look in just kind of where we are now versus where we were six months and a year ago, rates are higher across the curve. From a historical basis, these are the MMD rates, and here we're plotting the two, five, 10, and 30-year index. And you'll see kind of starting about the beginning of the year, that, that increase in rates that the market has experienced. You will see a little bit of a drop here. We have updated this for the past two weeks. Matches somewhat the way treasuries act, but because of the differences, they don't move in lockstep, but you'll see obviously increase in treasury rates also. Back up real quick. I think one of the important ones is the chart and the, and the thing. If you look on the long end, since 2019, the 30-year MMD has averaged 1.88. We're currently at 1.98. The high was 3.37. That was pretty significant in the municipal market. Right after the beginning of the pandemic, there were some real liquidity concerns across the market. Florida doesn't have a state income tax, but when the federal government delayed income tax payments, many of the states that tied their state income tax to that payment had to delay it, but they didn't have the option of working a deficit the way the federal government did. So there was some real liquidity concerns in the market. Congress did come in with a municipal liquidity facility out of the Federal Reserve, which had never been done before. And then the other piece that we watch is the treasury to MMD ratios. As I said, because of the tax concerns and liquidity concerns, we do look and see how these ratios are trading. It's not a, a constant in the market. Just because treasury rates rise or fall doesn't necessarily mean muni rates will rise or fall the same amount, although there is correlation. And this is what I, we mentioned the muni fund flows. It's a little bit hard to see, but the line across the top is weekly inflows. This is tracked on a weekly basis. You'll see the blues are positive and the reds are negative drops. So for the past couple of years, except for that liquidity part at the beginning of the pandemic, been strong inflows into the market, which has helped with rates. That's turned around this year. The bottom, we've tracked the 10-year MMD as interest rates. And you'll see, obviously, there's a correlation as money, less money flows into the market, we tend to see interest rates going up. I personally like to look at the Bloomberg forecast of, from economists. We don't, you know, nobody can say where interest rates are going. This at least gives us a consensus of where the market says. And we've done this twice. The first one here is what we presented to Jan in mid-February. That was as of January 31st. And then as of yesterday, we were able to pull the year-end for February. What's interesting about it is, if you look on the long end, the market had seen the 30-year treasury in the second quarter of 2024 hitting a 306, obviously, you know, higher than where we are right now, but, you know, relatively gradual movements towards that. If you look kind of a month later, even with the increased volatility in the war, the outlook is really not changing that much on the long end, with 306 to a 309. But if we look on the short end, kind of in the middle, you'll see three-month LIBOR, which is some of the shortest rates out there. It's at a .32 right now. The expectation had, had that going to a 1.89. It's already jumped to a .52, and the expectation is a 2.17. So we're expecting to see, the market is expecting higher rates in the long end, even higher rates in the short end, which means a flatter yield curve. So that's kind of an overall view of the market. We did put your outstanding debt. Obviously, we're continually tracking this for refinancing opportunities. Because we can't do advanced refundings and we have to wait 90 days before the call date to issue tax-exempt refunding bonds, you're on top of that. There's really not a current opportunity for refinancing. This excludes the lines of credit. Obviously, there is, you know, some consideration there as to when the right time is to refinance those, depending on current outstandings and future needs.
All right. So the long and the short of that is, in, in consultation with our, our financial advisors and the work that Jan Brewer and I have been doing, we are at or very near that point. As you will see, the, the CIP updates, the projects, if you recall, when I, I joined you, we came up with a strategy to get the lines of credit, get these projects moving, get them into design and engineering, so that when the markets look like they were getting ready to begin to change, that we would be ready to at least do our first issuance for that long-term financing in these projects. So that's the question that's going to be presented, you know, pretty much at the end of, of the presentation, when you see what all we do have moving, which puts us in a position that we can, can look at moving forward with at least the first round of long-term debt for the capital improvement plan. Jan?
Thank you, Wendell. I appreciate it. Wendell's a very good partner in helping us stay on top of everything. What we thought we would look at, if we can flip back to the slideshow, please? We thought we'd give you a quick update of where we are with everything, the first being the credit lines that we're with. So currently, you have three credit lines, two at $40 million, CBNA, and then remember your infrastructure sales tax. The public utilities, you issued later at $50 million. Currently, you can see you, we've drawn down about $15 million on the non-IST credit line, $26 million on the IST credit line, and you're right at 16.6 on the utilities. The interest rates that you're paying on those right now, you're at .29%, which is unheard of. So we're very good right now, I feel like, in staying, maintaining where we're at. We have to watch what's coming in the future, and we know that we're going to have to issue at some point soon, but right now it's remaining very stable, and you can see on each of the We went ahead and listed for you in your packet what has been drawn down. This is the line of credit for your non-IST debt. You also have your IST, and then you also have your public utilities. Now, this, what I wanted to show you is a listing. These two things represent the debt in your five-year plan. And you can see that in the first year of that plan, we have not borrowed all that we thought we were going to borrow yet. And that's because you're in design for a lot of large projects. It'll be coming before you when they go to award them through procurement. We'll have to draw down the rest of that to go through. But you can see that $196 million over the five years, it was the amount of debt you were going to borrow. And I think the, probably the recommendation is going to be, you'll have to separate it probably into three issuances, depending on where we're at, as the credit line works for us or doesn't start working for us. On the infrastructure, if you remember correctly, we borrow, we have a $40 million credit line. We weren't going to borrow against it. You were going to let it ride up and then start riding back down as you receive that infrastructure sales tax each year. And then the utilities, we had first estimated that we would need $56 million this year and $15 in '23. We're waiting to see how the design pieces come out and how soon we can put them, bring them before you to award contracts. That will determine, along with the interest rate, when you go through and do that. For your transportation projects, Candy, could you hand out those packets to him, you and George? We provided for you. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
While you're doing that, I think the important point, when you look at the, the three pages on the lines of credit, if you look at the encumbrances and you look at the project-to-date expenditures, that will give you an idea of how many of these projects are moving based on expenditures. So you can see a considerable percentage of these projects are, are actually moving, works being done, designing's being done, engineering's being done, and these projects are, are moving in accelerated fashion. Thank you.
Candy and George have just passed out on our, some detailed information. This is on our website. We update this monthly, and if you go to financial management and then to CIP, you will see all these projects listed, and it gives you a holistic view, for example, of Premier, or your holistic view of what's happening at GT Bray. So these are updated monthly. We just printed them for you, so you have it. Everyone at home can easily pull it off the website. Now with that, I was going to let Chad, would you like to come up and go over the next few slides, the pictures that you want to go through? Highlight?
Are you advancing?
No, you can.
Yeah, okay. That's what I mean.
Yeah.
So.
Good morning, Chad Butso, Public Works. We have an opportunity just to share a few things about projects that are active, which is, everybody wants to know, status. Projects that were existing within the CIP and moving through their assigned progress. Some things are still in design. And then everybody wants to know probably the most important thing about the six projects I got added mid-stream last year as well. So first couple of our pictures is just trying to show and prove progress. Technically, this isn't the newest photo of 44th Avenue currently being constructed from 45th Street over to Creekwood, just west of I-75. Technically, the bridge is probably setting beams on the last, on the last pier, but most of the pile driving has been winding up right now, retaining walls on either end of the bridge. We have our gap in the middle for our new water line that will run across the Braden River and be protected in that fashion and also be extremely easy to maintain. Also, on the 44th Avenue job, this is on the west, I can't get my west from my east, on the east side of the Braden River, over where we have and just opened yesterday was the, what had been the closure for Morgan Johnson and the, a lot of work with 44th as it crosses 44th. What you see now is what we called the realigned Caruso Road, but from an addressing point of view, it was easier. We, we've extended the name Morgan Johnson, and then Caruso picks up where the flag is. But this is where the new 44th is here. This, this section is not open just yet, but travel is open north-south on Morgan Johnson-Caruso at this point in time. That is fixing to be a new signalized intersection. The steel is not in place. It's not acting. It's being controlled as of always stop right now and will be until the signal's in place. We didn't, while there's no turning movements there, especially without 44th is open, it's traveler expectation. We didn't want to get people used to just blowing through there and never having the possibility of needing to stop. So some people may be asking, why is that stop sign there? But that was our thought process as we go through. Another major project that is gratefully underway has been delayed via permitting, so it's not as far along as we wanted to, is the long-awaited completion of Fort Hammer, the Fort Hammer Extension. The Fort Hammer Extension was planned several years ago to go from US 301 all the way to Moxon Wallow Road. From Moxon Wallow down to Erie, that is done, complete and open. From Erie south to 69th on the south end of Perry Community High School is done, constructed and open. This is currently our last segment. We're basically hovering over US 301, looking to the north in this photo. So it's well underway. A DEP permit, we expect any day now, they've told us they're going to write it, we just haven't, excuse me, physically seen the permit. As soon as that's available, then Woodruff, our contractor on this segment, can update his schedule and tell us when this thing is going to get done. We still easily expect potentially another nine months on this because he hasn't been able to work across. The permitting was basically right in the middle of this job.
It's the conservation, tied to the conservation easement that is on your board agenda for next Tuesday. That's the last piece.
Please, 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 please.
Yes, please, please.
Everybody would like Fort Hammer to be complete as soon as possible. This is obviously a job that's not underway, but I, I put it in here, one, I had a good photo of it, but two, it was explaining how we are trying, engineers, trying to do and improve reach-out as we can when we have issues to get neighbors to agree. For the most part, this is the plan to install a roundabout at the intersection of Honor Ray and Old Farm Road, and it has very limited issues of what we can do. Until you would four-lane Honor Ray, you just cannot install a traffic signal here because there's no place to put a turn lane. You would need another bridge to do that, so the cost feasible thing in the interim is a roundabout. What we were trying to convey by having our surveyor via paint, if you've noticed within here, we've, we had the surveyor lay out where the unmountable area of the traffic circle would be and where the mountable area would be, and also try to show, they're harder to see, but we have the edge curb and, and the medians, because we were trying to really show the HOA that we ultimately will need a corner clip for on this corner. What's really going to happen? They had a hard time picturing it from our plans, and we just, we had a big meeting out in the field, several of us walking by. The paint, we didn't take it up, but it's starting to fade, but it may still be there and recognizable, but it was just an effort that we have moving forward. So we're at the point where we're still negotiating the land, excuse me, acquisition with the HOA within that. That's how we'll take care of the adjustment of their sign and dealing with the landscaping that's in the existing median. That'll be our process where we work with that. Another project coming up, if we're saying it's not done, it's not done, but we got started on it, like many things, like our Erie Road Phase 1 sidewalk in Memphis. We had a Phase 1 to get the most important road, that's the straight shot, straight south to Lincoln Middle School. This is an example of some long-awaited sidewalk in that neighborhood that led Second Avenue East that led straight into the middle school. We have a project coming on between, in April and May to begin the construction of getting the sidewalk in the rest of the neighborhood. And once we're able to be done with most of that, we can follow on with our resurfacing program within that neighborhood and give that a, all one improvement at one time. I think that is all the photos that we had on the highlights. I wouldn't mind if Dr. Hopes would give me the opportunity, Scott, if you could step up to the microphone. What I wanted to do was let Scott give a quick overview. No, you can just, I don't care. You're welcome to be bright and inside. I don't know if I've ever introduced Scott May as the county engineer in front of everybody, but, so yeah, push the button, make it green. And so I'd like him to give you the- And so I'd like him to give you the overview of the process that's going on with the Fast Six project. So the projects that got added midstream. It's a separate process than we've ever done via our current CIP. And then say, he's going to explain the process all the way through and really highlight where we're at right now.
Sure. We actually, I call it the Big Eight now. We added Erie Road east-west for the Martha, from Martha to 301 and also from Martha to 69th. So those are all what we're doing, the fast track. The old way of doing this was we would take a project, get the design to a certain point, then we would prepare the legals and descriptions and start doing friendly takes. As part of looking at a study and alignment to prep for these items, we decided, let's see how we can expedite this as quick as possible. So what we did is, while they're doing the alignment study, we had the survey work done and determined where the right-of-way needs are going to be so that while we actually are starting in the initial parts of the design, we actually are getting the legals written and we can start talking with friendly discussions for the areas where we need land. Once we finish the land, or once we get that and they're working on design, that gives us a longer period of time to do friendly negotiations before we would have to pursue the potential of eminent domain. But this way, the old method used to be around 75% plans is when you would start talking about land. Now we're doing it pre-30% because the alignment's adopted. And then that way, we'll take the land. If we get friendly, we'll go for a little bit of an extended, what we call temporary construction easement. So, you know, normally we might need like five feet. Maybe we'll take 10 feet just temporary because it's, you know, making the grass look nice, you know, making sure the drive goes in without large bumps or any of those type of things. So that kind of puts it in a nutshell. And that allows us to shave 12 to 18 months off of what an old design period would look at when we were doing that. Because when you talk about doing the friendly takes and waiting till 75%, that's generally a six to nine-month period before you even start talking with the homeowners out there. This allows us to start going through there, figuring out which property owners we can work with, acquire the land and affirm the manner and which ones we would have to ultimately come to the board to request eminent domain on.
Thank you.
With that, the studies have been done. We do have alignments that have been recommended that we will be bringing to the board in the next month or two. We did have a little slowdown. And the slowdown we had happen is that there is a survey, lack of surveying out there right now. There's a high demand for surveyors. And so some of the survey companies have taken a little bit longer than we originally had anticipated with it. But we've gotten pretty much most of those in now. And we are actually in the process of getting ready to do final meetings to award the contracts for the consultants for them to move forward in design. With the surveyors giving us the legals and the alignments, we'll be able to start talking friendly negotiations in the next couple of months.
So, so what I want to say with this, Mr. Chair, is a lot of people are owed some recognition for this, including Mr. Clegg. When, when, when I joined you, there was a very different process taking place. And it was apparent that that former process is what was delaying a lot of these road projects from moving. And so this was a rapid pivot that really started with Mr. Clegg and, and I sitting down and talking about what was needed to prepare the General Counsel's Office to do a take through eminent domain to make it clear that these road projects were moving forward. And with that, it required Charlie Bishop's group in property management with the surveyors and, and Chad's group and Scott May joining us to, to really change the way we were doing business in order to move these projects forward in a very expedited fashion. And I can't thank them enough. And the board owes them, I believe, a recognition for how quickly they moved. And I don't think they thought we were going to pull it off. But we did, because you remember, you added projects in the CIP when we went through your priorities. And, and these things are moving. And it's because the entire group came together to work in a collaborative way and to painfully meet the expectations of Mr. Clegg's office to ensure that he had everything with the Ts crossed and the Is dotted and the, the surveys done in a way that he could build his case files so that everybody knew we knew business. And if we had to have him walk across the street to file, he was already prepared to file rather than waiting until the project was like 75% in design. Charlie?
Yeah, to be remiss if I didn't recognize Joy Leggett Murphy and her, the men and the women that worked for Joy. Today is Joy's last day. Yep, today's Joy's last day. She elected on her own accord to move on and pursue her passions. She was with me as we hired her replacement, Michelle, who starts March 21st. And I'll take her around and introduce her to the commissioners then.
Thank you.
We said the same thing.
Hey, we tried everything. I mean, I even created a new position for her.
Yeah, Joy's going to be missed.
So, you know, on behalf of not just the board, but on behalf of the people of Manatee County, this is hugely important work that you're doing. This, this board has made enormous requests of Chad's department. Wendell, Scott May, certainly don't be remiss if we forgot about Clark Davis and Joy and Charlie's department and Jan's department, to be quite honest with you. They're, they're banging on the calculators all the time every time we have a meeting, we make a change. But it, it's really important work. It may not be like sexy work that's like out front, you're banging on calculators and, and being a traffic engineer. But it's hugely important and it has a direct impact on the daily lives of all of our citizens. Traffic is the number-one complaint of people who live in Manatee County. You know, I think if you watch the last three hours in this room, then you understand that. So anyway, I just want to say thank you to all the staff on behalf of the citizens because it's incredibly important work. And, and, you know, they might be sitting in traffic cussing at you, you know, in a few hours. But the truth is, you're working very hard for them. And, and they would thank you if they knew the work that you were doing. I have Commissioner Bell. And I have Commissioner Bellamy on the board.
Yeah, ditto to the thoughts of the great job that everybody is doing. It's always awesome for me to walk around the community and see the changes that's being made. And I'm making my business to make sure. Whenever I talk to Dr. Hope, he probably tired of me. And Mr. Bishop, I tell him thank you for everything that they do. And we're actually changing the face of, of the community, not just in Somerset or, you know, 26th Street on West, in Bradenton, but also definitely in Palmetto. However, I did not hear, I did not, I did not hear Canal Road report. And I'm looking for it, so if someone can help me with that.
You said Canal Road?
Yes.
Sure. Yeah, no, we.
Isn't that New Orleans?
We, sorry. If you'd like, I can pull it up. We actually had an alignment study where they've done this now. We have broken this project up into four phases for that. One, so that one can move forward quickly where there's no land acquisition required. That is Segment Two, which would be from just north of, I think it's called Palmetto Estates, to up to almost Mendoza. The reason with Mendoza that's not included is because we are doing a realignment with the roundabout and there are some property that needs to be acquired there.
Right. So that's caused, that's on the canal and then you're going to pass James Tillman and 29th Street and it's going to connect up there at Mendoza, am I correct?
Correct.
That's the first phase.
That's going to be, what was originally called Phase Two will be the first phase. Because Phase One, which is the part from Palmetto Estates South to 301, does have some land acquisition needs and there's potential for eminent domain that we may have to file there.
Do we have a timeline for Phase One?
We are working on having that fully done in there. There is some railroad issues that we're trying to go through right now.
Crap.
That's, that's partly the problem, unfortunately. You know, it's, it's not as slow as dealing with the Army Corps of Engineers when we're dealing with permits. But when you get with CSX or some of the rail companies, they take a long time as well.
Okay, so we don't prolong the meeting. If I can just get a, a written Phase One, Phase Two and Phase Three and Phase Four of the Canal Road. And I know timelines are difficult to project. I also know they're always moving. They're always moving. But it does give me an opportunity to say, well, this is where we are and we may have it by this time. You know, and if it, there's movement on it, I, I'm understanding that. But I just like where we are right now. And I appreciate everything that you all are doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, and we're going to point you to the dashboard. I know every meeting, we have the administrator's dashboard. We gloss over it. We're actually going to take a meeting and we're going to actually show you the dashboard because many, 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 many of your interest and requests are just a click away. And, and, you know, that's on me. And so we've talked about that. But the, the point I want to continue to make is, is, especially for Mr. Commissioner Bellamy, had we waited and followed the old process for Canal Road, nothing would be happening for years. And, and so we're taking this different approach and we're getting work done that can get done. And we're moving with the General Counsel's Office to prepare him to come into these land-take negotiations from a position of strength.
Yeah, and this is where, one of the things that I always take an opportunity to thank you for your leadership and your staff and everything like that. Because I agree, there's things that are getting done, you know, without redefining some things. They may not have been moving at the pace that they're moving at right now. So thank you for that, that support from District Two.
Thank you, Commissioner Bellamy. Servia and Baugh are on the board. Commissioner Servia?
Yeah, just a quick comment on the same sort of topic that we heard from Commissioner Bellamy, and that is 63rd Avenue East. I believe it's on the right-of-way acquisition end. I just want to make sure it's not overlooked since I don't see it listed on the transportation project list. Maybe we need a little asterisk that says, this does not include all transportation projects.
Oh yeah, no, this, this is a small, we would be here till Friday.
I know.
You know?
But those, but those that are active, you know, and 63rd is. But I understand you're still trying to get right-of-way.
Yeah, we really, and, and a lot of it just had to do with what we had ready pictures on that are almost current. Because we still have a lot more to go over with you on this. So, yeah, please don't think that if there's something you're interested in, just let us know. We'll, we'll get you the details. But this is only a, a small portion of very visible projects of many, 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 many that are moving. Yes.
We will make sure 63rd is one of those projects on there by the end of the day or by tomorrow morning, okay? Thank you.
Is that all, Commissioner Servia? Okay, Commissioner Baugh?
Just real quick, I'm not going to ask about a specific project because I know where you guys are with all this stuff. But I just wanted to bring out and say publicly, thank you to Chad and Charlie Bishop. And there's really a renewed effort, so to speak, with dealing with different communities and residents and trying to build relationships in that regard for some of these projects that are happening. And it's amazing at what I'm seeing and hearing from communities now regarding working with the county. So I just want to say thank you. It's a big, big difference and it shows and it's nice. It's great and they love you guys. So thank you.
That's a tough one to follow. There's one clear, clear thing, we can never make everyone happy. So if I, I'll try, but, but usually the results may set you up.
Sometimes they just want to hear it from you guys. And, and they realize it and you're not going to be able to do everything the way they want it done. They realize that. But they feel like that you really are trying to listen to them as much as you can. And that makes a big difference.
Thank you. Ready to move on? Real quick, Dr. Hopes, you know how much I like messaging. And I just, I pull up the Manatee County website and there's Mangroves and that's good. And then there's the unnamed park. There's something about COVID and then the Crosley. If I want to go on there to see, because I mean, if you're a taxpayer, we're flipping a lot of your coin at building roads.
Three letters in the search bar, sir.
That is, and like I said, it's not the sexiest part of the website, right? But if you go on our website, I would like something on here so that people go on there and they know, hey, we are spending, we're investing heavily in, you know, what did I say? Life, what was it, forever assets for this community and we're working hard to relieve traffic congestion. And maybe we should communicate that better on the front page of our website and have something where you can go, here are all the projects. And then you don't have to get into like massively into the weeds on things. You have to be updating it constantly. But perhaps we could at least say, this has been funded. This is being designed, you know, and maybe if you have a quick rendering of, if it's already exists, that could be put on there as well. So you can click on that. And maybe if it was by district, right? You click on Commissioner Servia's face and here's 60, is it 63rd? Commissioner Servia, 63rd takes you there. If you click on Baugh, you know, it'll take you to 44th or Lena or whatever.
Excellent point. And as our chief marketing commissioner, we always appreciate the chair's input. And I'm sure staff, because I know Bob Ryan Shuttle's sitting there, I'll bet the staff are already pulling out the files, so.
And I don't want to add a tremendous amount of workload to staff. I just, I think that it's important.
This is great. Because I'm tired of seeing COVID on the front page of the website anyways, so.
Correct.
Fortunately, our rates are down like this, so we can say goodbye to that for now.
Yeah, COVID's old. Now we got the UK, or the Ukraine.
Tuesday, you were going to point out the dashboard or the next meeting, you were pointing out the dashboard. We could certainly go through Jan's website that we have that has all the CIPs, show people how to filter by either the project types, parks, general, utilities, districts, transportation. So, I mean, it's out there, it's available. I think the request was to make it a little more prevalent on the homepage.
Easier and point to it.
To get to the homepage. But we'd love to take that opportunity to show yourself and/or the public a little tutorial on how to navigate that.
Yeah, and if you, it doesn't, you know, it's not supposed to be, you know, we, as the commissioners, we, we gave you all the direction and we committed the money to it. But, you know, a couple of pictures of, staff are working their ass off. How about a couple of pictures of that so that people know, you know? The other, get rid of the connotation that, you know, you know, we're leaning up against shovels and show people building roads.
I'm glad you said that because I will tell you, we had a meeting late yesterday and, and we've been pushing pretty hard and we have a lot of tired people. But we're doing, we're doing the work that you want us to do.
Yeah, I just want, I want them to receive that credit on this. If, if we do this, I think it's a good idea.
All right, ready to move on to your favorite GT Bray?
Yes, let's, yeah, absolutely.
It's his favorite, not ours.
Here we go.
All right, Tom, you coming in? Here he comes.
I'm getting, I'm getting.
As Tom's coming up here, of course, you realize it takes a village to get these CIP projects underway. One of my most, one of my most dedicated individuals, Maggie Daniels, my CFO for the last 10 years. And Maggie, I know you're listening, has decided to retire. So come May, Maggie will be leaving the county. Again, on her own accord, her husband decided to move to North Carolina and she decided to go with him. Yeah. So Maggie, I love you. I know you're listening, so thank you.
All right, I'm Tom Yager, Manatee County Property Management Construction Services Manager. I have a little frog in there. So I'm not sick. I just, I think it's allergies. So I'm here to talk a little bit about the parks projects that we have ongoing right now. And as Chad pointed out, there's a big list of them. I'm going to go through about, I think there's seven or eight of them. Jan has a list on the CIP project that lists the rest of them. I think we looked at a Power BI the other day that was pretty telling and that could be shared as well. But, so the first project on the list. Okay, is John Marble Park?
GT Bray.
You're right, it is GT Bray. You're right, it is GT Bray. Okay, this is GT Bray, sorry. That's, these are pictures of the Covered Racket Center, which is the pickleball courts. You can see one of the covered areas, over 10 courts is almost completed. And we're going to cover six courts, or four courts on the other side, and leave two uncovered. You can also see in the background the four newest clay courts that are under construction. In this picture, they were under construction. Right now, they're currently in use. Again, this is the covers over the pickleball courts. And now, this is a more recent picture where you can see the courts in use. The next, well, that was the GT Bray Racket Center. So now we have the John Marble Park project. And when you look at that one, you'll see in the white, oh, you guys, oh, that's right, sorry. There we go. I'll get to hang this clicker in just a minute. Sorry. So, we have the double gym, which is in the white. Then we have the recreational center, which is in the blue. And then we have the pool that's going to be, you know, renovated around the deck. We're going to get rid of the spaces that were the former bathrooms, and that's going to be all shifted into the recreation center. There's a splash park upgrade. And then we're going to, in that space, we have to use the basketball courts and the tennis courts, and they're slated for later construction.
How many parking spaces are there? Didn't look like very many, did it?
It's, I think, if I'm not mistaken, there are 88 parking spaces there now.
Okay.
It might be larger than that. When we originally were going to use the second gym as a hardened facility, there were a lot of grant tag-alongs with that. One of those, which was we had to have enough parking spaces for 750 people, which triggered upgrades to the 30, is it 37th Street? So, there were a lot of things that we had to do there. The million dollars that we were going to get was not really going to cover everything that we wanted to do there. So, we pulled back on that. So, it's a double gym, but it's not needing as many parking spaces. There's Canaan Park, which is in design right now. We have completed, oh, jeez, I'm sorry.
Jan's the driver.
Yeah, I can build anything. I can't handle technology. So, we're currently at about 60% design. We have a master plan that is in for county review right now. And so, and that, the amenities are included in this are about a mile walking trail. We have two pickleball courts. We have a restroom and parking, and two dog parks, a large and small dog park. So, this is Lincoln Park Pool. As you can see, it's under construction. This is about a month ago, so part of the pool deck now is finally being poured. If you could move forward again. There's the big splash bucket under the kids. Little splash park there.
This is splash park.
And then these are the basketball courts that are going to be constructed on the south, on the west end of the South Football Soccer Lacrosse Field. We are, we currently have, are in negotiations with the general guaranteed maximum price, and we'll be coming to the board with that probably in the next month or so. We have also the Parish Community Park. We are currently moving forward with 30% designs. This is a conceptual design that we met with the residents out there and the commissioner, not at the same time, but we've all looked at this and agreed that this is what we want to move forward with on Phase One, which is everything left of the red dotted line. So, we're going to be doing the amphitheater event field. We've got some parking in there. We have trails, a dog park down in the bottom left corner, and we also have an environmental boardwalk that goes through the wetland in the upper left corner.
So, I can say it publicly, one of the delays in this project was the infamous land swap with FDOT, which required us to do capital improvements before we swapped it. We had an interesting little strategy that worked quite well. In fact, it took less than 24 hours for FDOT to come back and said, "We're just going to give you the property. And then sometime in the future, you'll agree to invest the value of the property in a state road project in Manatee County." So now we'll be able to expedite both Phase One and Phase Two of this park with this new approach with FDOT. And I have to thank L.K. for moving pretty quick when he thought we were going to walk away from it. So, good job to all of us.
Very good. One of the things I forgot to mention about Lincoln Park is that we also have a press box football restroom area.
Yep.
That's going to include a pedestrian walk bridge for access from Sylvan Oaks Park to Lincoln Park, which does not exist unless you walk out onto 17th Street and come around the corner and come through the parking lot. This will allow people to come straight through from the subdivision into the park safely. This is the East County Library. This is under construction. These are fairly current, 220 of 22. So, you can see that we have the pads for our columns being poured. The stormwater pond is completed in the back, and we're starting the area around the parking lot. So, this one's moving forward. Next is Robinson Preserve Projects. What we're currently working on is a volunteer building that is kind of in the center of the picture, near the roundabout on the right-hand side, on the lower right side. And we've also completed some of the environmental lands. Charlie H. has done those. And we've also completed a restroom and a kayak storage area, 120 kayak storage rental areas. People can come stick their kayak in and then use it. And then the Washington Park project. Washington Park has geared back up today. We're starting to complete the civil work. We had a little setback with the amount of unsuitable material that we're reaching in the pond area. So, we're going to move, we have defined the area. We have, our consultants are going to give us a quantification of how much material there is there. But while we're doing that, we're starting to move again with the, I guess it's the civil side of the project, where we're going to build the restrooms and the pavilions and the walk trails. And there's an open playfield and a playground, and those kinds of things will go in there. As I said before, there are many projects going on. This is just the highlights.
I understand the 120 kayak tubes are already completely booked.
I'd have to look to Charlie H. to check.
Yep.
That's correct.
So, good public access right there. I like it. Lincoln Park, after, of course, after March 8th, will change all of our verbiage to Eddie Shannon Park, I assume, right?
Uh, yes. Good point. Good point.
Okay, good to know.
And I should also point out, I think there is a naming of Canaan Park, so it may or may not be Canaan Park after.
That was next on my list.
Oh, sorry about that. Didn't mean to steal your thunder.
I have Commissioner Whitmore on the board.
Yeah, I was going to bring this up under comments. Yesterday, I met James, I met with the PCA group. They came up to the ninth floor with staff, and staff went over and alleviated their concerns that right now we were just doing Phase One, because that's all the commissioners have voted on. So, so far, Phase One is already completely voted, and it's in the CIP plan, right? And so, we're moving forward with that. And I guess all of them will be meeting about Phase Two or whatever. And Scott joined us for a few minutes and just, you know, said, "Well, but we'll start moving right away on Phase One, correct?" Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner. I don't have anyone else on the board. Dr. Hopez?
The next session, as you know, for really, gosh, probably about the past 11 months or so, then working with the organization, making some changes, this momentum with regards to CIP would not be happening if we didn't make some changes in the way the organization operated and the way, the way we've got it, you know, we organize ourselves in order to be effective as a team. So, the, I need to update you. Mr. Clay can go through whatever the ordinance is, but at some point after these changes are planned and/or implemented, I need to share them with you. This is a special meeting, because at some point, you have to approve the changes I've made with regards to departments and the organizational design. So, the first slide is what the organization looked like when you hired me as the acting administrator. Those of you that have studied organizational design will recognize, if we had a wide enough screen that took up this whole wall, you would see every single position reported to the county administrator. Like, I don't know, 18 people at the highest level all reported to the county administrator. And it would just not be possible to manage an organization through this type of growth and capital improvement projects and budgeting with that design. So, the first phase, as you noticed, the citizens of Manatee County, the county commission, then the county administrator, there were two deputy county administrators. One was vacant, and nobody reported to the deputy county administrators. They were just, just kind of there. Organizationally, they didn't have any direct reports. So, if we can go to the next slide. So, as you know, the first thing that, the first step that I took was a very good decision, which was to promote Jan Brewer to deputy county administrator, and initially be over both IT and financial management. That decision was made because in my assessment of the departments, there were actually two departments that I felt were very well managed. They had a second layer of management under them that was incredibly effective. And I felt that they could transition to not only do the job that they had, but take on other responsibilities. And that was with Jan Brewer, who is, as you know, deputy county administrator and chief financial officer. And then the next move was with Charlie Bishop that I brought to you in promoting him, or reclassifying his position. That's an important factor, because these folks, we took their director position, reclassified it, and gave them additional responsibilities and additional departments, and they've done a great job. And so, if you, you see over on the far left side, that's Charlie Bishop. He has property management, public works, and building and development services. Yes, ma'am?
Mr. County Administrator, I'm sorry to bother you, but I don't, maybe you said it and I missed it. What's the difference in the colors up there, the green and the gray, orange?
Differentiate the level of positions.
Actually, it was just pretty complex.
Just trying to break it up. And so, the color, the color makes it look like the deputy county administrators are at the same level as the county commission. So, that lets you go right into all this.
And you weren't, so that's why I was asking, to be honest. I take responsibility for that. It was just.
We're trying to put the image and the theme of Manatee County government. That's a, that's a good point. So, and then if you, so the first move was with Jan with financial management, information technology, and then we had issues in HR. And when she was very tired at the end of the day, I was able to convince her to take on the challenges of HR. That being said, Jan led a team, including an executive search firm, also brought in an international HR consulting firm, did a true national search, and had some great candidates. We narrowed it down to three. And then Jan and I did video interviews of the three finalists, all of which were highly qualified. Narrowed it down to two exceptional folks that have both private sector experience and, most recently, government experience in relatively large counties. And I think she's on her way from Washington State after fighting the snow, getting out of the mountains to Seattle to catch a flight to Sarasota. And our number one choice will be here this evening. She will interview with the directors tomorrow at our directors' meeting. They're going to be in groups, and they will interview her. I'll spend 30 minutes with her, and then she will be available for any commissioners that are here and would like to meet her. And Jan is looking forward to having a director in HR, because she's done a stellar job, but it's been somewhat tiring. The other move that you know, my first outside recruit was Robert Rheinshuttle as deputy county administrator, and you confirmed him some months ago. He is overseeing county administration, neighborhood services, which you know, you're going to see is going to be changing, as you know. Lee Washington was promoted to that position and has done, is doing an incredible job. Also, Mr. Rheinshuttle, public safety, parks and natural resources, and utilities. During this transition, I have been working, which is more like signing the, authorizing the timesheets for the convention and Visitors Bureau and Rio because of some things that were going on there. So, next slide. Any questions on this?
Yeah, I do. The very first under deputy county administrator, I'm assuming that's property management, so that's Charlie Bishop.
Yes, ma'am.
In our slide, we have gray under records management. So, the one you gave us is wrong.
It's coming. It's coming.
The transitions were very hard.
Right. So, what I want to do is walk you through, because within these departments, you have divisions. In those divisions, there were some transitions too. You want to hit the first one?
Well, wait a minute. I'm not done.
Okay.
Records management, and we need to talk about it sometime. I just still don't understand why you have our website people and our graphics and our advertising people under records management. But you'll explain that.
So, we'll get to record, okay, the first, the first step was with regards to building and development services. As you know, we moved code enforcement over to public safety. That's this move here, leaving code compliance in building and development services. And in neighborhood services, in neighborhood services, we moved the health services program, which is the jail medical and those services, we moved those to public safety, where we have healthcare professionals over there. And then records management, which was over in property management, moved over to county administration. One of the key functions of record management was public records requests.
It's different.
And so, we tightened, yes, ma'am?
I'm just totally confused. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Because he keeps adding these gray boxes.
Well, sorry about the colors. I just can't tell. Yes.
For this part of it, if you look at the gray and then look at red, red shows you where that division moved to.
Okay, got it. That helps.
So, records, one of the, one of the biggest functions of records management was public records requests. And we needed to tighten up public records requests so that
Yeah, thank you.
there was a process, and I felt it was best under the direction of administration, to ensure when public records requests come in, what was responded to was what was requested and what we are obligated to produce.
Right.
And if it's an issue that deals with a county commissioner or the county commission or the county administrator, we ensure that those items go to the general counsel's office as a second variation. And then the other thing we did with that is we bifurcated the responsibility. The way it was being handled in the past, one person received the request, one person produced the response, and then gave the response to the requister. We separated that out so that IT, independent of the records department, got a request to produce the information, and we went through checks and balances. After records management?
I got questions on records.
Okay, as you know, one of the areas of concern.
Commissioner Whitmore has a question on records.
I just want to assure records management that with IT involved, that's so that we can assure there's no deletion of public records.
Yes.
I think that's a great idea personally.
Yeah, well, we found, as you know, we also brought in an IT, a cybersecurity, we also brought in a cybersecurity firm. You want me to finish responding to Commissioner Whitmore?
Yeah, and when you're finished with her, Commissioner Servia is on the board.
We brought in a cybersecurity firm. You are going to get a, we're going to have a shade meeting coming up on cybersecurity, which is a big topic right now because of Russia and on building security. One of the things that we discovered in the review of cybersecurity is that there was a breakdown with regards to doing queries of emails and calendars and things like that, where there were searches done, items were printed, files were created, and they were produced. There were also searches that were done where the search history was deleted. And items were printed, meaning something was produced. Files were saved, meaning something was produced and saved to a file, but then the search histories were deleted. And so, the recommendation of the securities consultants were, and our new director of IT, who has experience in that area, was to separate these functions so that you had controls in place so that we did not have a breakdown in documentation and recording.
And Scott, to verify, this is my only time I've ever said it, the two people in this county that got queries that were deleted were Scott, Hopez, and myself. So, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
There were a few others, but primary in one search.
Thank you, Commissioner Whitmore. Commissioner Servia is next on the board.
I just had a question about the general counsel. I'm not sure I understand. Who is the general counsel?
Uh, Mr. Clay.
The county attorney's off, oh, county attorney's office is general counsel. I didn't understand that term.
Oh, sorry.
Thanks.
Okay. Okay, Commissioner Aides, one of the areas of need that many of you identified was around support for commissioners and helping you perform your duties and communication with constituents. So, we created for you the positions, went about recruiting them. I think it's working well. I'm sure you'll let me know if it's not working well. But that group of four individuals are under county administration, and Mr. Rheinshuttle also works with them on a regular basis to make sure that they have the support that they need. In addition to that, you recall, which was not my plan, although I did put my fingers on it, your workspace in the commissioner's suite was renovated last on it, your workspace in the commissioner's suite was renovated last July during the recess, so that those aides had separate workstations in order to perform their duties in support of your role.
Okay, Commissioner Whitmore and Baugh on the board.
All right, so if we want to, in fact, Commissioner Van Osterbridge and you were involved with it, if I wanted to schedule a meeting, then I was told I had to go through certain people, my aide couldn't schedule it. Has that gotten better and that's not true now?
The, I think, Mr. Rheinschuttle, the issue came where they were actually scheduling it as opposed to requesting a meeting, so.
To schedule it.
Yeah, so I think we have a better system now, so everybody has, when they're scheduling, they have all the calendars, at least my calendar, so that I don't get double and triple scheduled. And so, no, I think we have that worked out.
But that's not true.
No, no, no.
Commissioner Baugh, you're next on the board.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just ask, when it comes to the commissioner aides, that I know Bob has been having meetings with them, thank goodness, thank you, Bob, for doing that, but if email could go out to just all the commissioners letting us know when those meetings are taking place, they will know. Because invariably, I call, and I can't get my aide, and I'm like, where is she?
That's a good, that's a good point. And we're working on, we're working on getting, I'm working on having 311 operators rotate upstairs in that reception area. And so what we'll do is whenever they're having their group meeting, they can be coordinated so that you know that they're right there in the conference room. But the 311 operator that's assigned to us will be able to handle those correspondence and calls for you.
And the only other thing I would say in reference to what we're talking about here is as far as my calendar, I had too many issues in the past with everybody trying to figure out where I was, what I was doing, and it was being used against me in a lot of ways. So, no, I am the only one, my assistant and myself are the only two that have my calendar.
And so, we are doing, we're respecting all of your individual requirements in doing it. So, I think we've got, we're smoothing it out, just give us time, because we're also working with IT, you know, in order to get all these sort of systems in place.
Mr. County Administrator, can I just, I just want to understand, we can put a lock on private things, like if you have a doctor appointment, you can put a lock on it so that it's just your personal private thing, but for county business, we should all be able to know how to schedule with each other, is that not correct?
So, Jorge has mine set up so that, you know, if anyone other than he or I look at it, it shows that I am busy.
Right.
That the time is blocked, but it doesn't show specifically what I'm doing. At the end of the month, my calendar is released into public record, but until that time, it just shows that I'm busy.
Oh, okay, at the end of the month, you release it to the public, because it's public record, right?
Correct.
And county attorney believes that that's fine, right? So, that's great. Okay, yeah, that makes sense, thanks.
I'm glad everybody approves.
Okay, no one else on the board?
All right, thank you. Next.
Hold on, Commissioner Thatcher's on the board. I apologize. Commissioner Thatcher, he'll hold off.
Okay, redevelopment and economic opportunity, that was, that was an interesting department. As you know, especially in Commissioner Servia's area, or like in the southwest TIF, you know, money was accumulating, but really things weren't getting done. And I think what happened there is that director was kind of thrown a whole lot of different things. It wasn't just economic development, it was redevelopment, then it was affordable housing, it was HUD programs, and things just were not progressing at the rate that I felt they should be progressing. So, unbeknownst to me, as I was thinking about providing for the focus for just economic development and redevelopment, which I found to be one of Jerry's strengths, she had already made the decision to move on. So, when that occurred, I had to pivot to take a different approach, and that was during an interim period to bring economic development and redevelopment under administration, because I had been working with the EDC to try to accelerate a lot of, especially in the southwest TIF, a lot of the economic opportunity, and took the HUD programs, the affordable housing programs, and rental assistance, and moved that to my new favorite director, Lee Washington, who was up for the task. And so, that transition has sort of effectively taken place, but because there were some 60 or 70 keys that the clerk had to move, I don't think it's officially effective until March 15th, after today. And so, Lee's been doing a great job of getting a handle on what's going on, but I think I've briefed many of you individually, but let's just say that there were processes going on in that area that really needed to be tightened up around some of the things that we were doing around home mortgages and things like that, and it's smoothing out. And so, that's where, that's where we are with that. I am working on, we pay the greater Bradenton area EDC two payments that get up into nearly $400,000 a year, and I felt that, if you recall, one of the things we talked about when we were looking at strategic planning, that there are some things that you kind of outsource. We were kind of outsourcing a lot of the economic development by way of payments to the EDC. And in meeting with Sharon Hillstrom and Max, I felt that they would be better situated to do some of the functions that we were doing in-house. And as you know about some of the projects that Mr. Clegg and I have been working on with the EDC around economic development, I think you see how much it's accelerating in some of the great opportunities for companies coming here and creating jobs. All right, is that?
Do you have name changes?
Okay, name changes.
Can I ask who Rio is under in this gray?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't, you talked about Jerry, where?
So, there is no more Rio.
Oh, so that's a lemonade.
There is no more Rio department.
And Lee's, some of that's going to Lee's department.
We took the director's position and made it a senior financial analyst.
Okay.
So, we're actually shrinking government a little bit in this area, and Lee, in taking on all of these other areas, needed a very strong finance person.
Yeah.
So, we took a director's position that was pretty high up in the salary range. We reclassified that down to a senior financial analyst and provided Lee with that additional resource.
Thank you.
Who's that?
So, you had development.
Okay, as you know, the infamous Building and Development Services Department's acronym, I'm sorry.
Before we move on, Commissioner Bellamy has a question, and I think Commissioner Thatcher has a question.
Are you telling us who these people are?
Who's the financial analyst that's assigned?
I don't know if he's recruited the person yet. You have anybody in mind?
You looking for a job?
Apparently.
Commissioner Thatcher, do you have anything?
Qualified.
Yeah, he is, he is, and I'm going to get, I'm going to get to that in a minute. We're almost there.
Here he comes, there he is.
We probably shouldn't have thrown a bunch of names in there, but we tried to make it simple.
Well, we don't want it simple.
So, let's go, let's go to Building and Development Services. The acronym was BADS, okay? That's not the greatest, I wasn't comfortable with it, but I left that to our new director of that department to work with her team to think through how to re-image that department. And they came up with the, looking at other counties and other organizations, to rename the Building and Development Services Department, or Development Services, to just Development Services.
Where does that say?
And so, that is the name of that department moving, moving forward.
Development Service, and it's?
Right here. Commissioner?
Oh, I see it, okay. He's going backwards, okay.
And then, I guess while we're under there, we, and code compliance, they aptly renamed code enhancement.
And that's just for our building things? It's not for land buildings?
And, you know, land development code, the comp plan, and she's also working to reestablish a comprehensive planning department.
Good.
Or planning division. And now, we're going to move over to Neighborhood Services. Lee and his team got together to think about what they are and what they want to portray, and that's being renamed and rebranded Community and Veteran Services.
Where is that?
That is right over here, Commissioner.
Some, I'm not, I can't read it. Okay.
It used to be Neighborhood Services, it's now Community.
Yes, thanks.
And Veteran Services. See, yeah, do that again so they can see it fall down? Watch these graphics. Jan's folks did a great job. See how they fall down?
Page six.
All right, Madam CFO, what's next?
Next we have, I believe.
To the breakdown.
You need your mic on.
Yes, the different breakdowns for each of the ones. This is just to provide.
So that you can still see the programs?
So, this is, this is Charlie Bishop.
Mm-hmm.
Charlie.
Yep.
Property management, and so you can see the divisions under property management, building management, property acquisition, construction services, survey, we do, we double teamed to recruit a surveyor from Miami.
We did.
So, ground maintenance, premier sports maintenance, replacement renewal projects, public works, field operations, project management, traffic management, infrastructure, fleet service, stormwater, I will tell you, these are still too large of departments, but we're doing this in smaller pieces, and I'm about ready to get somebody from USF to come in and look at all this, because it's a lot of work, and it's wearing a bunch of us out. Development Services, building, planning and zoning, comprehensive planning, and code enhancement. That's Mr. Bishop. All right, moving on. All right, the infamous Jan Brewer, deputy county administrator and chief financial officer. Financial management, which is budget and procurement. One of the reasons why she's glad an HR director is going to be hired and hopefully confirmed by you next week, because we are moving right into the next budget cycle, and we've already had, what, three or four meetings? So, human resources, which also includes employee benefits, which is the employee health plan, and we're taking a real close look at that, and we've got some help there. Information technology, as you know, we, you know, Jan recruited a stellar IT director, and he has, he has just been doing an exceptional job, and that helps Jan sleep at night, she'll really sleep better at night when we get that director of HR in here. So, moving on, Mr. Rheinschuttle, county administration, basically everything that we've got up on the ninth floor, including information outreach, impact fee administration, records management, administration, redevelopment, and economic opportunity. Community and veteran services with Lee Washington, community development, county probation, human services, library services, neighborhood connections, and veteran services. Under public safety, animal services, emergency communication center, emergency medical services, emergency management, beach patrol, code enforcement, and community health. This is, this is a big nut here, and so what we've done, or what's getting ready to be implemented, is in the, in the, the budget, you approved a deputy director. Steve Lishower is going to be the deputy director over, kind of like the emergency areas, because remember, they also took on jail health, and jail health is getting ready to move into a big construction project with a jail medical wing. And then, the community, community paramedics, EMS, and jail health will be in another unit under another deputy director.
Who's the other deputy director?
Will be Jimmy.
Okay, so we got Stephen, Jimmy, okay.
Okay.
Jake's the head of it.
He's the director.
My man, stay fun.
All right, moving on.
Mr. Chair and Mr. Administrator, you have deputy county administrator, then you have county administration and all this stuff, is that you? Because community service, you have Lee, public safety is?
Yeah, this is the second page of Bob, that's what I'm saying. You know, remember, I still have a vacancy of a deputy county administrator? You can see why my team has said, what are your ideas about that other position as we're all worn out? So, you can see why, when you see it on paper, and quite frankly, when you're going through this day to day, there's a reason why they teach you in graduate school to draw this stuff out, because then you can actually see what's here. So, you go to the second page, this is still Mr. Rheinschuttle. So, that's parks and natural resources and utilities. And so, we will be, as a leadership team, thinking through what needs to be moved to that other deputy county administrator position that's been vacant for a while, and begin a recruiting process for that position.
So, are you going to have three, four deputy county administrators?
Four, and you can see why you need it.
And that's downsizing government?
Yeah, it is, because most of the positions are all reclassified.
Well, okay, why?
Now, remember, we didn't create any new positions. These are all reclassifications.
You're not going to split up some of these other directors that only have three or two or three or four departments? I still had the floor, I was just asking. I mean, Bob's got a lion's share, how come it's not, you haven't split them up, sorry, Jan, and sorry, Charlie, but how come?
Because Jan and Bob are doing all they can do, and Charlie.
Deputy County Administrator.
Well, actually, Bob, Charlie, and Jan are handling all they can do.
Yeah.
So, I have a quick question, and then Commissioner Cruz is on the board. And this is, you know, we hired you to run the place day to day, I'm not looking to get into the weeds necessarily, but I'm just curious, because public, sorry, public works and utilities seem like a natural fit to me.
Right.
They're both behemoths, I feel like the two of them alone constitute a deputy county administrator to run them. So, I'm just wondering why you didn't pair them together?
Well, they are, as I said, we're now at a point.
You're still shuffling, okay.
We're now at a point of defining that other deputy county administrator, and you're right, it will probably be utilities and.
Public Works.
Yeah, and public works needs to be split up, because you've got transit, which is growing and has some challenges. You've seen all the road projects that Chad and his people have to focus on.
Right.
And so, that's the next phase, you know, as I told you, this is not something where you just come in and do a one fell swoop and just change everything and drive everybody crazy.
Right.
You phase it in as you're able to assess the organization and its ability. So, you're absolutely right, and the deputies all got with me, was it yesterday? It seems like it was like forever ago. And we talked through it, and it's very clear that we now have to move to that next phase to break up that and bring in another, you know, deputy to handle it.
Okay, because I know we're about to have, I have Cruz and Servia on the board, and I know we're about to break into a debate about growing government, but when we throw, you know, almost a half a billion dollars in road and parks at you, the existing workforce is not going to be able to take that on, I understand that.
Yeah, and it's important to keep in mind, we didn't create new positions. We reclassified existing positions and we eliminated a director, so I'll get you the impact of it, but we've been very cognizant of not growing like FTEs. We have looked at how we can take existing FTEs and kind of repurpose them.
So, let me ask you a question. You had two deputy administrators originally. Bishop becomes a deputy administrator, I don't mean to pick on, well, Bishop and Brewer become deputy administrators.
That's true.
Was a person hired to become the building and the property management director?
No.
So, his position was essentially?
It grew, basically.
His position grew.
Expanded his position.
We didn't create a new position. We didn't add an entire deputy administrator.
Correct.
And the same with Jan.
Correct.
We didn't add an entire deputy administrator.
Correct.
We just enlarged those two positions, added responsibilities for them.
Right. To help, because a lot of you wisely, you know, caution me, you know, you can't do everything. No, you're absolutely right, I can't.
Right, no, you're running yourself ragged there.
And so.
The start, so I get it.
Yeah, and it's important, because, because, look, first of all, government's going to grow a little bit, because the county's growing like crazy.
Right.
And we added a whole lot of spending.
Yeah, and I get that.
But what we've done at management, we have not created, you know, new positions of management, we've taken positions that could be better utilized at a different level and aligned it that way.
And it did take me a minute to wrap my head around, we need an entire new lift station crew, right, because we're throwing down so much more, you know, pipe and sewer, and, you know, we need more ambulances, and then we need more of this, because the county is growing, and I get it. So, we weren't able to shrink the way I wanted out of the gate. I'm still hoping we can privatize some things, but that's in time, you know, like you said, phasing in.
Rio's a big one, Rio's a big one that's being privatized.
Right, eliminating Rio, so there are areas where we are trying to shrink.
What's being privatized?
Yeah, but, yeah, because if you're going to use the EDC ultimately, it is sort of public-private.
Right, and if you remember that one slide, and I'll send it out to you again, there was the one slide in the strategy presentation where it had core, the bars that made up the core of the organization. the core of the organization, and then there were bars at the end, on both ends, and it said outsourced. So, we have to evaluate and say, is this something really government does well as government? Or should we, or should it be outsourced or partnered in a way?
And I like Sharon Hillstrom. I think she's extremely bright, extremely sharp. So, I have no, you know, I have all the confidence in the world in Sharon and her team. So, I like that suggestion. I have Cruz and Servia on the board. Commissioner Cruz.
Just, this is more of a broader question. Let's say we're not growing government, but we're certainly growing the org chart. The org chart is much more convoluted than it used to be, to your own point. It was the County Administrator and everyone reported directly up to. Now, we're adding layers, layers to the point where you have some pretty in color-coded here. If we're going to grow an org chart and compartmentalize things like this, are we going to use this org chart in a way that creates at least efficiency? We're not creating savings from a dollar standpoint, because at the end of the day, you're going to hire two Deputy Administrators, which you already had previously. And, okay, we've moved two people up, and let's, you know, whatever nominal difference there, it's de minimis. But we're not saving money here, but we got to be doing something positive other than just adding pages to an org chart. Because right now, you know, and you and I have kind of had this conversation, but you know, we'll have it again. There's a lot of inefficiency in getting anything accomplished here because sometimes I'll try to have a meeting about something seemingly innocent about a park, and I have to wait four weeks for a meeting because you have to be there.
Yeah.
But we have a Parks Director, and we have a Deputy County Administrator who oversees the Parks Director. If they're not going to report directly up to you, then we're not creating efficiency by still requiring now three levels of people to show up at every one of my meetings and try to coordinate a calendar across the board. Because I just had a meeting, and you were there, and you were there, and then Elliot was there, and then Charlie was there, and it was like a three to four-week process to get a meeting scheduled. Can we at least create some efficiency where we can go under the assumption that the Director, and if need be, the Deputy County Administrator are the people who should be attending, and then they report to you about the meeting as opposed to trying to coordinate all these...
And then they are, and then you have a meeting tomorrow where I needed to be someplace else, and they are going to handle that meeting.
Okay.
But what if the Director can't make it?
Yeah, I'm really not. I mean, and these guys, these guys do a lot on their own. But I want to come back to the point because you referred to...
But you're not going to be at my 12 o'clock meeting tomorrow?
I'll tell you.
I was going to say, because originally it was canceled because you couldn't be there.
Yeah, and I tried to get out of it, and the gentleman I have to meet with, who is not who you think it is, was only in town tomorrow.
Okay.
And it's pretty important.
But that, I'm just saying, is that a policy? I need to know from a policy standpoint, not a hypothetical.
Yeah, no, I absolutely do not.
Going forward, can I tell Teresa, can we tell her that we can set up meetings directly with Deputy Administrators without...
Absolutely, absolutely.
Can't make it, though.
And Mr. Ryan Shuttle, the Deputy County Administrator, can help you with that. Because I will tell you, a lot of you know, I'm not in every meeting. And I don't, I'm not required to be in every meeting, and I don't have time to be in every meeting. But now, I do want to go back to this growing the org chart because the reason why we did it the way we did is we're not growing it. We're just reorganizing the org chart. We're not creating new positions. We're not creating new FTEs. We're realigning the org chart so that I don't need everybody reporting to me, which was a crazy way to do it. So, we're not growing the org chart in any ways. I mean, are we elevating positions of management so that they take on additional responsibilities in accordance with their capacity and their abilities? Absolutely. And I think it's working, but, yes, sir.
So, before we move on to Development Services, the order of the board is Servia, Bellamy, Whitmore. Commissioner Servia.
And I don't remember raising my card. I thought I was going to wait till the end, but...
I'm sorry.
But, I mean...
Don't waste an opportunity.
If you want to give me the time. I'm sorry, Commissioner Baugh.
I'm sorry.
You just said she can't stand it, she has to do it.
I'm talking about you.
Oh, okay, all right. So, Development Services, I'll start there. I love the name, it's very common, a lot of people use it. And you know what I'm going to say. Please make the Planning Department a priority. We're a coastal community, we're the fastest-growing, one of the fastest-growing in the nation. We need good planning because we can't just continue to build and improve and build and improve. We need to...
You're from the...
Well, just...
You'll be there, how would you determine that, too?
Okay, all right, thank you, that is critical. And then, I just want to comment on the REO philosophy, which has changed, right? So, when I was first elected in 2018, I was told that TIF money was being banked for a cataclysmic project, something that was going to change the face of South County. That was the philosophy at that time, okay? So, and now the philosophy has changed. And I'm not saying I disagree with that or agree, I'm saying we're headed in a great direction, or you would hear otherwise from me, right? But please just understand that it wasn't, that they weren't moving, it just was a different philosophy at the time. I just wanted to clarify that.
I wasn't here prior, and all I know is, what we're doing is, we're catalyzing it at a much faster rate.
I mean, just like the bond market now is so appetizing that we are bonding roadways and we are, you know, committing to more projects than ever before, it wasn't always the case years ago.
And don't misunderstand me, I'm just saying that that department had so many diverse responsibilities, it was difficult to be all that it could be because it was just overwhelmed because it was thrown with the CARES Act money for rental assistance and all that kind of stuff.
Right.
And by taking this approach, I think you're going to find that with Mr. Washington focusing on the housing areas and those projects, and with partnering and working closer with the EDC, that the economic development and redevelopment is going to be broadened.
Right.
And we're going to be able to take those dollars and deploy them into meaningful businesses and high-quality, high-paying jobs.
And no doubt that the Bradenton area, EDC, I mean, they are just top performers, and I'm so happy to be working with them in a bigger role. But you've talked with them, they're fine with that, they don't need additional staff. You've worked out those details.
They're, we've identified at this point, two of our existing staff that they work extremely well with, and they're satisfied with it. So, now we're working through how they'll be aligned, they'll still be housed here, but they'll work a lot closer with the EDC and that team, and that will give us some efficiencies.
Will they be county employees or EDC?
They'll be county employees.
So, they'll remain county employees?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thanks.
Sorry, who are we talking about?
I'd rather not get into the names. These are people in economic development, because I need to meet with all these people.
Okay, but I'm talking about the company she was talking about.
The EDC, Sharon Hillstrom and Max.
The EDC, I thought you said somebody else. No, I thought you said someone else.
Okay, Commissioner Bellamy, and then Commissioner Whitmore.
The first thing coming to my mind is Scotty, Scotty, Scotty. But in respect, it'll be Dr. Hopes, Dr. Hopes, Dr. Hopes. And the reason why I'm saying that is, some of the elephant in the room, as far as Commissioners having the ability to talk to certain staff and certain Directors, we want to know, is that a policy, I mean, you hear a Commissioner over there say, "Well, I'm going to talk to who I want to talk to." I just want all of us to be on, huh? I just want everybody to be on the same page on what, how we talk to staff, what staff we can talk to, and things like that. I mean, we all know, two or three weeks ago, there was an issue because there was someone that felt like they couldn't talk to certain staff members and everything like that, and here we go. In this setting, we're trying to identify, is this a policy? Because some staff have been made it clear, you know, they, we can't talk to you, you know? And to a certain extent, understanding protocol and everything like that. I respect that. But I will remind you of this, some of, most of these Commissioners have already had respectful professional relationships with individual staff members, and to take and say, "All of a sudden, they cannot communicate." I don't necessarily think that's the best approach, too. But now, if you start pointing fingers, everybody's going to be looking with that little smirk on their face like you don't know nothing of what we're talking about. But there's a reality to this. There's a reality to this, and my man over there said, "Well, what's the policy? What's the policy?" And I think that's what we're asking. I talked to Bob the other day, I was like, "Well, who can we talk to? Talk to who you want to talk to." And if that's going to be the case, let's say that's going to be the case. But if that's not going to be the case, what is documented, what is written? How, who do we talk to? If you are not available for a meeting, then it's a Deputy County Administrator, then it's a Director. But here's the reality of it, as a Commissioner, Reggie Bellamy wants to get to the bottom-line person who knows the information that I need. Sometimes, no disrespect to any of the Deputy County Administrators or anyone else, sometimes the Deputy County Administrators do not know. They have to get back with us. So, why are we blocked from being able to go to a Director? I had a Director that I've had a great relationship, I'm not going to call the Director's name, and now all of a sudden, they don't feel comfortable answering my calls. And I think this is the elephant in the room, and nobody wants to honestly discuss it.
I'll discuss it. We'll discuss it.
All right, Dr. Hopes, you respond, and then the order of the board is Whitmore, Baugh, Cruz, KBO.
We...
You look good.
The most expeditious way to get the information you want or need is to go through one of the Deputies because they don't have direct day-to-day responsibilities for the activities in a department. Each of the Directors, as you've seen in the organizational chart, have a very full day. And so, it's not that, you know, you can't go to these people, you can. If you want to create a disruption in the workflow of the Directors, who have a tremendous amount of responsibility, then do so. The Deputy County Administrators are getting very, very close to their departments and are informed with what's going on, and have the authority to cross departmental lines to get you the information you want, to get you the meeting you want, to get you the decisions you need made. They are the best people to go to because they have been created in this organizational structure, so they have Directors that report to them, and they do not have minute-by-minute department responsibilities. They have other people doing the hard work that you want them to do. What was happening in some situations is multiple Directors were being tasked with doing something for Commissioners, and they dropped everything that they were doing, which meant that meeting about that road didn't happen and other things. And that's why we've been gradually making these changes and getting people to a level of authority where you can get the information you need and you want in order to be able to make decisions, to understand how the organization is operating. And it's not unusual to do things this way, but you're not being prohibited from anything. As far as I know, you know, you're an elected official, and I was an elected official. I'm not about to tell you what you can and cannot do. What I have done is I've asked you to work with me so that I can transition the organization to effectiveness, which is not just delivering, but operating efficiently. And believe me, I've had the conversations with the Directors, and they, many of them are, you know, they're relieved that they don't have to drop everything that they're doing because a Commissioner calls them. Because, look, you're the top of, you're the top of the organization. There's, you know, they're not going to, you know, they're going to take your inquiries seriously. So, if you are, if you are having problems getting what you need in an efficient and a timely manner, then obviously you come to me. I work for you. I work for you as a corporate body, and I treat each of you as an individual boss. If you're not getting what you need out of staff, then you call me. And you know, you can call me Saturdays, Sundays, you can call me at night. I prefer that you call me and not text me. But, you know, when the day is done, there are two people that work for the Board of County Commissioners. Mr. Clegg and I work for you. And what I've done is I've created an organizational structure and a communication chain to get you what you need as quick as possible. And Commissioner, you know, Bellamy, you know, you know full well, when you call Charlie Bishop, whether it's a tree in a road, or it's something wrong with a sidewalk, he jumps on it right then regardless of what department he has to go to, and your task is addressed.
Yeah, and you're absolutely right, but when I call anybody, I always say, "Is this a bad time? Can you call me back? Is this a good time to talk?" I strategically and intentionally do not interfere with anybody's workflow. Anybody that I call, even, I called the Sheriff the other day, "Hey, is this a bad time? Anybody I speak, even when I speak to you, is this a bad time, when can we talk?" I am not, or I don't think any other Commissioners are trying to interfere with any Directors or Deputy County Administrators' workflow. We do want to know what the policy is. I think that is the best way for us to have a clear understanding. If that is your expectation, is for us to discontinue those communications with Directors and everything, although you just said it's not. I just want to be clear. I just want to be clear. I mean, it was a fire extinguisher that was taken and utilized a couple of weeks ago because someone felt like they couldn't talk to staff. And we had to put that fire out. I'm just being honest with you. So, the reality of this is, what are the expectations, and what's the policy?
Here's my request. Here's my request, and you guys as a collective body, four of you can tell me you want to do it differently. My request, my request, because the organization is tasked, is that anybody that reports directly to me, and you've seen the charts, anybody that reports directly to me, my request is you go to any one of them for anything you want. Because first of all, you don't know whether I'm doing the job you want me to do unless you can talk to the people that work directly with me. But my request is that you first go to one of the individuals that reports directly to me, that has the departments, you've got these charts, that has these departments and divisions under them. My request is you go directly to them first because they are the ones that know what responsibilities or what tasks the Directors are charged with on any given day, and they can navigate it for you. And more quickly, because in many cases, especially with the organization moving, you may not know who has that responsibility because we're in a transition. But I assure you, the Deputy County Administrators know, and they can help you. But that's my request. You know, you can make a decision as a group of who you want to interact with in the organization that you're charged with. My request, as your Administrator, is that when all possible, you go directly to my direct reports that are over the areas where you have concerns, or you have needs, or you have issues.
So, because I feel that perhaps this has become an overcomplicated matter, essentially, first of all, to be clear, because you wanted to be clear, this board sets the policy. So, if you want to know what the policy is, make a motion.
I wrote, right?
So, there's that. He said the word "request" about five times. He's just requesting that we set up meetings through the Deputy Administrator that is over whatever department you're trying to do, you're trying to reach.
I'll copy the Deputy Administrator, I don't...
And I'll be honest, on simple things, I do just like code enforcement, right? I'll email Jake, and I copy Ryan Shuttle. I mean, let's be honest, Ryan Shuttle doesn't give a damn about the fence falling down in West Bradenton. He could care less, but I copy him.
Code enforcement is an area that really is there to respond to Commissioners because you are closest to your area of the community.
Right.
And there's nothing wrong with that.
So, if it's not something like super simple like that, then I just have Jorge go through whomever the Deputy is. Yeah, so I have Whitmore, Baugh, Cruz, I'll take myself off, and then Satcher. It's 3:16, so somewhere in there, we'll take a recess. Commissioner Whitmore.
I'm going to do what George Cruz said, and I'm going to do what I want. I'm sorry. I have been, no, I've been playing the game from day one. This girl here has followed the rules, and you know it, and all the Directors know it. If I want to meet with somebody, I copy the County Administrator and the Director. And then how, you're talking about something happened recently, it was me. I got all my stuff canceled because I didn't, I didn't go, they all had to cancel everything because everything had to go through the Deputy County Administrator. I said, "What?" And I raised, "Holy heck." And now it's a little bit better. But then my aide had to cancel everything because they have to get permission from the Deputy County Administrators that, you know, and I'm not going to do that, I'm sorry.
Now, now, in fairness, Commissioner.
Hold on, let me, in all due respect, let me talk, because I know you're gonna, and I love you to death, but you're going to vacillate. And, and I don't want anybody to get mad at me, but, and I don't want the directors mad. There are a few that do actually call me right back and do stuff. But, you know, my schedule, I'm sorry, you know, or your guys' schedule, because a lot of you have other jobs and travel, it shouldn't be around the deputy county administrator if they can make the meeting or not. We're educated people that are trying to do our certain tasks that we're working on. We know who we need to meet with. I can't get a director to call me back. A director's not allowed around, allowed on the ninth floor unless they get approved through the receptionist to come back and meet me. They don't even have a pass to get up there now. Something, I mean, none. Yeah, I mean, I mean, we set policy, guys, I'm sorry. I love Scott, I love his management, but I think it's a little heavy-handed when we're all, you guys got districts, I don't have districts. You and I, we're everywhere, but you guys got districts. Kevin, I, you would not put up with it for one second if nobody would call you back or they'd cancel your appointment, you know that. That happens to other commissioners. And Vanessa, nobody knows what her schedule is, which is fine. How can anybody know if the directors can meet with her, or whatever, if Teresa's not there? You know? I'm just telling you, I'm sorry, I didn't bring this up.
May I respond?
No, not yet, I'm not done. But, and this REO thing, I didn't know that you were giving REO to EDC, and we have employees that are going to still be working for us. EDC was for a broader range of, like, air products, that was the thing. REO was to get economic development in Manatee County. Now, where do you think EDC's priority is going to be? And now we're going to pay employees to work for them? Yeah, they're going to still be us, but they're going to report to EDC, so, well, that's what he said.
Okay, may I respond? Yes, yes. May I respond?
Okay.
And, and fairness, Commissioner Whitmore, you know the, what got you stirred up?
Yeah.
That director did not, and he apologized, and he misunderstood, he was not given that direction, those meetings were not supposed to be canceled.
My assistant canceled them. It wasn't a director.
Okay, now your assistant canceled, but, but I will tell you that, that, that issue, in fairness to my staff, those, those meetings, and they went right back on the calendar almost immediately.
Thanks to you.
When we found, yes, but that, that, we, we're all working through communications with a number of different people, and, and that was corrected. That was not, that was not canceled because you didn't follow a procedure, it should not have been canceled in the first place. And, and Mr. Ryan Shuttle's working much closer with your aides so that things like this don't happen. But in all fairness to my staff, and in a way to me, immediately when I became aware of it, we got down to the bottom of it, it was a mistake, it was an error, it wasn't intentional, and those items went right back on your calendar within a very short period of time.
And I've also called for other meetings, and it's, I can't have the meeting because a deputy cannot attend it.
If there's a problem with communication, then you call me, and you do on weekends, you call me and say, listen, I want this meeting, and you know I'll take care of it.
What I'm saying is the process, like George said, if he doesn't get what he wants, he's just going to go ahead and make the appointment. And some of the commissioners are doing that. Carol follows the rules, I try to, and I get so frustrated because directors don't call us anymore.
So, and with regards to the EDC in Rio, as, as Commissioner Cruz pointed out, it's still there. I, I'm just telling you that we're working closer in collaboration with the EDC principally because the EDC came to me and said, look, we have all these projects, we can't get your staff to give us what we need to move forward with these employers.
So you got rid of the department and gave it to them?
I did.
Employees. Yeah, that's what it appears like. Are we paying them more money, the REO, I mean, the EDC, to do this?
We're not. I expect to get our money's worth out of them.
Commissioner Baugh, you're next on the board.
I've sit here and I've listened to all of this, and I don't, I don't quite understand why it's such an issue for some. I haven't had a, a problem at all. We were asked to, why am I getting that phone call? We were asked to contact the deputy county administrator and that they would set up the meetings. And I've been doing that, and I haven't had any trouble. And in fact, I just, I don't know, last week or the week before, I literally sent, I think, an email to Charlie Bishop about a meeting at Waterleaf, and he immediately emailed me back, and he said, would it be okay with you, Commissioner, if I talked to Chad Busto? And I said, well, yeah, of course. But, you know, I didn't suggest that, he did. Point is, I have never, never had any trouble getting a meeting with anybody. I do not go through to the directors directly. I don't do that because I was asked not to. And so I try not to. I try to make sure that I abide by what has been requested. And the reason being is because, number one, there has been issues with some staff who have felt that commissioners were intruding upon them, causing issues, things were staying in an uproar. I didn't want to be a part. So I started abiding by what the county administrator had asked. He is trying to revamp government. I think he's doing a great job, he and the deputy county administrators, they're all working very hard. I don't have an issue with it. It's working fine for me. So I, I'm not finding fault with anything that anybody has said, I'm just not having those issues. But I was amazed, and maybe I missed it somehow, or whatever, Commissioner Bellamy, that you said you didn't know what the, the protocol was. Well, I mean, I thought it was made very clear to me, so I, that's what I'm asking, I don't quite understand that. Yeah, he said he didn't know if they were, you know, if you could call directors or not call direct, or whatever. I'm just saying, I understood it, but maybe somehow, maybe all the commissioners have not. That's what I'm trying to say. Is there something, Mr. Bellamy, Commissioner Bellamy?
He's debating responding, but I think if I ask a quick question, it may resolve any debate.
Yeah, I don't see where the problem is, really.
Do you request, is part of your request, essentially, you know, sometimes I need just information from a department head, and it's someone I can call, like we said, we have relationships with them, and it's someone that I can, I can call quickly, or I can text them quickly and say, hey, you know, what's going on here, or what's going on there? Because I just would like to know, right? I live right down the street from GT Bray, and so, you know, randomly something's going on, and so I text, you know, Huntziger, hey, what's going on? Or for instance, I left my house last week, and there was a million gallons of water pouring into the street on 59th, and I said, hey, Mike Gore, what's going on? So, you know, do you have an issue with just, you know, calling in for, for information?
I, I have confidence that you can each exercise reasonable judgment in when you're going to do it. All I would ask, if it's something more than a simple, hey, it looks like there's a million gallons of water on 59th Street.
Right.
Of course, you know how to call. But if it, if it's trying to schedule something, and I'll give you one example, okay? A commissioner, before I kind of, you know, took my hands around this, in consultation with the general counsel, by the way, had, had organized a meeting of about four directors, a deputy, attorneys, and, and things like that, and it, it was going to basically bring in a whole bunch of people on something, and, and I didn't feel that the project was at that stage yet. And so, that's an extreme example. Early on in my tenure, so don't think it's anything recently, things have been going fine, but I will tell you, you guys brought me in because you wanted to have some basic business principles applied to how government operates. And, and as you know, I've worked for boards, traded on the New York Stock Exchange, I've, I've worked for public agencies, and in none of those organizations did you have board members at any time in any will going in and kind of disrupting the flow of the organization. So, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to create a balance, but no. You know, I, and, and if something happens and it creates a disruption, you know, behind closed doors, we're going to talk about it. But, but, yeah, no, it's, you know, now, could there have been some directors that maybe overreacted, or maybe utilized my, my comments to say, I'm getting tired of it, and just block it out? You know, they're human too, and they're, and they are busy. There is not a director in this organization that isn't working well over 50 hours a week, okay? I, I have taxed this organization as far as I can, and I'm trying to maintain some level of, of, of organization and management and basic sanity because we're in a very competitive market. And so, I do work with these people every day, and as I told you, I have a, I, I do have the skill of understanding the threshold and the tolerance that an organization and people have before they go a little bit over. So, you know, we're a team, we're all in this together, and I work for each of you.
Okay, so Commissioner Bellamy would like to respond because he was mentioning Commissioner Baugh's comments, and then we are Cruz, Satcher, Servia.
So, the, the reality of this is, what I was asking for is what's documented? And the reason why, certain commissioners get some information, certain commissioners do not. I think one of the ways, yeah, I, I think one of the ways that clears that up, and I've seen some of the emails where some commissioners say, hey, could you send this out to all? Whatever, whatever it may be, or either have the assistant send it out to all, and that'd kind of clear the information up as far as, you know, what the expectations are. But what's documented, what's documented is, is, is the way to go. Now, what, what I will say about staff, and I'm just going to say this, and it's not going to make a bunch of people comfortable, but this is the reality of it. Yes, the staff are busy, but they also worry about their job. It's a lot of staff that are concerned about the current climate, and I'm, I'm not necessarily sure why people act like that doesn't exist. That's out there. And, 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 and if I am guilty of that, I apologize to you, the county administrator, and any other staff, if I have made your job worse to make you feel like you're concerned about it. But I think that's the reality, and I think that is something that we need to keep out in front of us. The more we communicate, the more it's clear what those expectations are, what is documented. The chairman say, we make the policy. Is, I don't know, or not, there was an invitation for me to make a motion or anything like that? That's not the direction I'm going. I am saying, what are the documented expectations so everybody could be on the same page? That's the, that's the only thing that I'm asking. And everybody follows them. I, I'm, I can follow the rules, but I also can say I can do what I want to do also. Because as a county commissioner, the reality of this, what a lot of people don't realize, you work for us, we don't work for you. But I think we work, us working together is the most important thing because we need to make sure that we serve the county the best when we possibly can. So, I'm just asking for the documented expectations because if it's written, it cannot be, it cannot waver, and it can always be reminded, just like we talked about the civility plans. You had four or five people emailed it back to you, we were able to recite it, we know what's there, and we can refer it back to it. That's the only thing I'm asking for.
So, Mr. Chair, would you like me to document my requested communication process? Because now we're getting into a little bit of micromanaging.
I think it's, I think it's reasonable for you to send a one paragraph email with as, as your request. I think that's reasonable, but I still have Cruz, who's been waiting patiently, along with Satcher. So Commissioner Cruz.
Yeah, and I think that's going to go a long way of you making a recommendation and a request, and we can decide as a board what we want to do. Because I hear what you're saying, and, and I, I kind of get the, the nuance, it's tricky, but you're talking about boards you were on previously. A corporate board is massively different than this board. You can say what you want about a corporate board's policy and the CEO's, but it's not like this. Because by your logic, you, you know, a board member for Apple is not getting a phone call from Bob Smith because his iPhone is glitchy. We get those phone calls about the glitchy iPhone. We're not simply faceless board members that fly into Colorado once a year to go skiing and talk about policy, and then fly back away for a year and leave it up to the staff. We are actively the front-facing, effectively, staff for the committee. We're the ones getting all the phone calls. So, we have to talk to our constituents, and they're going to ask us questions. Why is that road flooded? When's this road going to be completed? What's going on with that park? You know, what's this? And we can either respond to them, which is what we got elected to do, and for better or worse, whether you think it's our role or not, that's how we're going to be judged four years later. Or, if you'd rather, Kevin could simply post, because, tell everyone, I'm not allowed to find out why that road is flooded with a million gallons of water, but here's Mike Gore's cell phone number on Facebook. Everyone give him a call, because you guys are allowed to call him. Which is better? One of the seven of us reaching out to get information, disseminate it? Or just saying, we're not allowed to speak to our staff? I mean, how does, nobody here wants to go and tell their constituents, we're not permitted to get that information. That's never an acceptable answer. So, we have 2,000 highly qualified, skilled, knowledgeable people here. The, the statute is, I read it, and I'm not saying it's correct, but the law is, we're not allowed to speak on behalf of this board. So one of us, the, the idea and the intent is, one of us can't go tell staff specifically what to do from a policy standpoint. That's where we're prohibited. We're not prohibited from speaking to staff. We don't walk out the front door when someone says, good morning, we just walk past them. I mean, we're not, you know, we're not mean people. Like, we're, we're allowed to speak with people, we're allowed to converse with people, and if I have a question about a park, or a road, or something else, I, I'll reach out because I'm getting information from my constituents. I'm not telling somebody what to do with that park or that road, but I'm gathering information. And so when I have a meeting, I want you all there. In, in a best-case scenario, like the meeting that, that you're canceling on me, I, I would prefer you being there, and I would prefer Lee being there, I prefer Bob being there because that maximizes the utilization of the meeting of a very important organization, Manatee County, that requested a meeting, and three of them are showing up for that meeting, and I've now found out about 20 minutes ago, you're not going to be there. And I just looked at the invitation, and you don't have Bob on there. So the deputy county administrator was also not invited to this meeting. So, this is a policy that isn't being followed today, and now I have to go tell that organization, oh, by the way, you could show up, but this, this is a chance it's just going to be me sitting there. So I don't know what, what the benefit of that is. So that's why we just need to understand what you want us to do so we can do it.
So, I'll repeat again, I have confidence in your judgment, when a water tower is emptying or something like that, that you call whoever you need to get the information. What I am saying is, the most expeditious way outside of an emergency to get the information, the data, the reports that you need to respond to a constituent, would be to go through one of the deputies. That's the most expeditious way to get it handled because they can navigate, and they are closest to the organization. Do you have to do it? No, and I'm not saying that. I mean, remember, I was an elected official too, and I certainly went to people to get information when there was a crisis or something like that, you know? And, 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 and the, and the policies, the policies that, that I followed on that elected board at the request of the, the head of that organization was to go to that person's direct reports first, and if that didn't work, you know, I went directly to that, that, that head of the agency. It is merely a request to help me run the organization. It's not a mandate, it hasn't been mandated, and I will tell you what I told the directors from day one when I got here. When a commissioner calls you, you take their call, you listen to what they're asking, you be polite, you be respectful, you be courteous, and when you get finished with them, you pick up the phone and call me. Because I want to make sure you're getting what you want. But, you know, I, I don't want you to misinterpret, and, and you know as well as I do, we talked about this meeting last week, and I said I would do everything I could to undo this meeting with a very prominent business owner in this community to see if I could reschedule it, and I tried all the way through last night and this morning to reschedule it, and I'm telling you now, I haven't been able to reschedule it. But I expressed to you my concerns that I, I was called into something that was pretty important, and it was limited availability. And so I don't want your colleagues to think that I'm just like, you know, dropping you. It was the last thing I wanted to do.
Just to be clear, I'm assuming you reached out to the organization, told them you weren't going to be in attendance?
Your wife is with the organization, knew last week, and, and knew that I wasn't going to be able to make it, and that person at the organization said that Lee Washington can fill me in after the meeting.
Commissioner Cruz, do you have anything further? Okay, it's 3:36, we're going to take a 10-minute recess to stretch our legs way back at 3:46. We're in recess. We're in recess.
Okay, welcome back. We are back in session. We are still in, we still have commissioners on the board for discussion. Commissioner, the order of the board is Thatcher, Servia, and Baugh. Commissioner Thatcher, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate it. So, speaking just to our general comments and what we've been going over, first of all, I may speak for the entire board when I say that none of us envy you your job. Okay? It is a, it's asking a lot for one person to run an entire organization, the entire organizational chart, and interface with the community and interface with the commissioners. And you've got commissioners on different sides of the political spectrum and different sides of the personality spectrum as well. So, that's asking a lot. You know, unsolicited advice? Try to keep a short account of what's going on with each commissioner so that you know what their concerns are in their district, what's important to them, and how, what you've got going that's addressing it. I don't think any of us, you know, honestly, for me, do I really want to call a director and have a call? I mean, they're great people, but I'm just saying, I've got plenty going on, too. We've all got a lot going on. I'd rather, you know, make one or two calls. But, we also know, and I remember this from when you were interviewing for the job, you were in my office, and you said, "You know, information's important in an organization, and you've got, you know, people can use it against you. They can take the information and not give it back to you, so they hoard it, and then they have power over what's going on." And so, we as commissioners, I think, you know, you get that sense of like, "Okay, do I know all that's going on?" And then you start finding out other things, and it can be frustrating. But I feel like, you know, most of us, if we keep a shorter account, or what I'd like to see for me, and I think you've got a, here's another unsolicited advice. When Commissioner Bellamy calls, right, versus, I won't call any other name, all right? But, there's some people that are gonna let you know exactly what they're thinking right away when they're thinking it. They're gonna, you know, everything that they want, it's gonna, you're never gonna have any questions about where you stand with them, right? Then there's some of us, I'll just say me, that way I don't have to include anyone else in this. For me, if I'm kind of a little upset about something, I try to calm down, and I don't want to let somebody know that I'm frustrated, right? And so, but that also means, and I remember having this conversation with an aide, I said, "You know, you're gonna work for me and Commissioner Van Austinbridge." I said, "You need to realize Commissioner Van Austinbridge is gonna be on the phone with you and working you a lot harder than I am," right? I said, "That's okay," right? I said, "But the other thing you need to remember is, is if I'm nice, and I just call once, and I just leave a message, you really gotta realize that even though that was only one thing, it's really important, or I wouldn't have bothered to make the phone call," you know? And, boy, that's tough, right? And so, to always know, like raising kids, you know, each one's got a different personality. So, I think you can do it, and I think we can get used to it. We might need to make some adjustments, because we might be used to being able to be a little too involved in the day-to-day, and it's okay for us not to be involved with that. On the other hand, I do understand frustration. You know, commissioners, or for me, I don't like feeling like I'm being kept in the dark or kept out, and I don't think that's the intent at all. I think you're really busy. This is a big job. And so, maybe closing comments are as important as everything else is. Just remember, keeping track of what's going on with the commissioners is very important, not because of who we are, but because of who we represent. And so, theoretically, we should be taking the concerns of the people in our district and bringing them to you and to the county. And then if we don't do a good job of that, if we're picking the wrong projects and the wrong people and the wrong, you know, things to champion, then, then we have a reckoning, right? Every, you know, two years, half of us are gonna be up for election. Maybe six of us in a year and a half, or this year. So, we have a reckoning over whether or not we're setting the right priorities or not with our voters. And, but, in the meantime, in between that, keeping track of where we're at. So, that's all I have to say, is just that, I understand it's a, it's a big job, and, but I think you can do it, and, but in order to do that, we're gonna have to, you know, to do the best job we can. You can't think of it just like you're, you know, because we always say it's like being a CEO. Sort of, because nobody was gonna really fire, you know, the founder of Apple, right? Or whatever, like, so, kind of. And I'm not saying, and let me say this, oh, yeah, okay. All right, well, I'll go to George, yeah, and then now it sounds like I'm talking about firing somebody. My point is, it's a tough job, but if we can all keep short accounts of what's going on, I think we can keep up on it. And then, there's a lot of, there's a lot of room for improvement that you're seeing and that we have seen you made, and that's why when we have a conversation like this, I don't like talking about it, because I see, you know, nine things that are way better. And I see one thing that, gosh, I wish this could get fixed. Well, that's pretty good, nine things out of 10. And I'd rather talk about the one thing offline, not in front of everyone personally. But sometimes we end up in meetings, so, all right, thank you, that's all I have.
No, no, thank you, and those points are important, and like those conversations we had early on. I mean, information is important, it's critical, I've been in those shoes. And it is, it's a struggle to, to, to kind of figure it out. And when I figure it out, I'll probably write a book about how to disseminate all of this information. Some of it isn't ready for prime time yet, that needs to be one-on-one. You know, we got the newsletter, but then we backed the newsletter off. Instead of every other week, it's like once a month. But, that had a lot of content in it. But, but you're absolutely right, everybody's right now stretched a little bit thin. We're still understaffed. But, but, but it's on me, I mean, that's, it's my, my primary responsibility is to keep each one of you informed, and there's a tremendous amount of information out there. And it's not just me, and we'll work on it when the deputies get together to talk through how we can increase that, that information download, both passively, but then also actively in response, especially as some of you or most of you move into, you know, a very competitive election cycle. You know, you're, you're gonna need the flow of information to come at an even more rapid pace, but also, you're gonna need it formatted in such a way that you can use it and you can communicate it. And, and I'll work with Bill Logan on that. He's been working the past few weeks on, on kind of some of what we're talking about to be able to get the message out, both on critical issues that pop up, like this morning, that, that I'll be getting with each of you on, and those that are just regular things where you've got projects and you've got priorities so that we can get that information to you. Also, share with you how to navigate the dashboard. But, but, you know, I appreciate it, and it is, it's tough, you know? It's, I've never worked for an elected board before, and it's, it's sometimes a rodeo, but I'm having fun, except for the past hour.
Those are actually great comments, Commissioner Thatcher. And, you know, when Commissioner Baugh was the chair, we went, there were a lot of tumultuous things that happened, and a lot of change that took place in the county. And then when I became chair, I said I wanted to ensure that we were achieving our objectives and sort of, you know, reaching goals that we had set in 2021 during this year. And, and I have a file on every commissioner on this board and their ambitions and their goals and the things that they're trying, you know, things that they're trying to achieve, including myself. You would have to ask Jorge, he updates it after the meeting. Your voting record is on there, too. But, and it's needed if you're gonna successfully, you know, you know, pay attention to what everyone here is doing and what is the board trying to achieve. So, I think it's a super smart idea to have a file on everybody, and then you know the direction the board is going. And that's the only way to feel, the only way you're gonna, you know, be able to steer the ship is if you know the direction that everyone wants to go, right? So, at any rate, Commissioner Servia, and then Commissioner Baugh.
Yeah, great conversation, and I'll just throw in my two cents here. First, I want to start with, you know, it's important that we have a lot of respect for the county administrator. We hired him to do a job, he's come in, and he's doing the job. So, I try to follow whatever direction he gives us orderly. I appreciate what he's doing. Now, having said that, I will say also that communication is the most important thing. That's what gets us into trouble, that's what makes us successful. So, I like the communication to flow a little bit more up and down the chain without restriction, but I completely understand what he's saying when he says that his directors are busy, and they don't want to get a call from us saying, "Hey, can you tell me what's going on with that ditch that needs cleaned out?" You know, so I think the answer to that is, just as he said, reasonable judgment, professional respect, and the way that I have been handling it is I will send an email to Rob Reinschuttle and copy the director and any other people that are pertinent and say, "Hey, this is what's going on." So, he's always involved, I'm communicating directly with the deputy, but I'm also getting the information out to the director and to the pertinent staff that are doing the work. So, and that's appropriate, I'm hearing that's appropriate, right? Okay. And our commissioner aides, I think that we should use them a little bit more appropriately in that, you know, I'd like to be able, and I do, ask Natasha, "Hey, I need a meeting on this, can you coordinate that?" And she's working with, it may be director's aides or assistants, it may be, at times, directors, and it may be other staff. I don't know how she's accomplishing it, but I'd like to give her the authority to go do it. And then 3-1-1 is another way for us. If we need something done and coordinated, use the 3-1-1 system. I use that multiple times, every single day. I would like to see directors have access to the ninth floor. I, I just think...
Hey, in all fairness, there were a couple doors I didn't have access to yesterday. Give us, give us a chance to, give us a chance to, you know, obviously, there's a lot of stuff that's being done around security.
Yeah.
We're gonna have a shade session on security. I, I understand, I, I myself didn't have access to some of the doors, and we're working through it, just bear with us. We, 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 as you know, are improving security necessarily. We will be building up the, the, the access for those that need access, and the other thing, the elevators are gonna have to be controlled, too. So, just bear with us, we're gonna have a meeting, we're gonna go through everything. We've had a consultant in, we've had the sheriff's department in.
Yep.
It's, it's all about security, and so...
I appreciate all that, but I'm also a commissioner, I, I'm very transparent, I'm accessible to everyone, anyone can come in my office, I don't care. You know, you can come in my office, I'm not, I have nothing to hide. You can look at my calendar, in fact, I want you to. So, that's just who I am, and I think in government, you have, you have to be that way. The public is allowed to understand what we're doing, because they pay our salary.
Absolutely, we have a nice, we have a nice new lobby that's right off the elevator where people can check in, and we can verify that you indeed want that person to come in. And, and so, just bear with us, let us, let us go through the, 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 the report from the consultants and from the sheriff's office, and a lot of this will make sense. But, but understand that we and I hold the responsibility for the, the safety and the welfare of people in the building.
Right.
And, and by no means does that mean to exclude anybody, but we have, as you've seen, there are a number of layers to go through from a security perspective to ensure that, who says they have an appointment with Commissioner Servia? Has an appointment with Commissioner Servia?
Yeah, we definitely need that, I appreciate that. But, if Chad needs to run up and tell me about an issue that we talked about yesterday, because he's already in the board cha, you know, or he's already nearby, I, I appreciate that you could do that.
And we have, we have, we have forms that you filled out before. You're gonna have new forms that you can fill out, and you can designate who you want to have access to your office, et cetera. Give us time, we're, we're working through it. As you may have noticed, all those card readers, including the card readers in the elevators, now have labels on them, so we know what that card reader number is. You'll be able to look at that card reader and say, "I, Commissioner Servia, want so-and-so and so-and-so to have access to card reader and door number X." Just give us a little bit of time, we're, we got a lot going on. This is all about your safety...
Yep.
...and security, and the employees' safety and security.
I appreciate that.
It's not to, it's not to inhibit people from having access to you.
I appreciate that. And to George Cruz's comments, I, I agree with a lot of what he said, too. You know, because my, a day in the life over here with me is, I'm talking to people that are mad because we were out there, we started cleaning their ditch, then we didn't finish it, and when are we coming out? And I got people who have abandoned house next door to them with rats in it and squatters and people doing drugs, and, I mean, this is the kind of stuff I'm getting calls all day long. So, I can't, you know, I can't efficiently address those by just putting it, sometimes by putting it all through the deputy, right? But I am very cognizant of people's time. So, and flooding is a big issue in my district. So, there are many times, and maybe I shouldn't admit this, Chad, you tell me if I've done something wrong. Tom Gersonberger and I have worked together for decades, and I will send Tom a text and say, "Hey, when you get a break, even if it's after 5:00, would you call me? I got a question about Bullies Creek." He'll call me 5:00, 6:00, you know? And that's just how we, I think we can efficiently do business, because if I have to go to Charlie Bishop, who has to go to Chad, who has to contact Tom Gersonberger and then get it back up the chain, it's gonna take too long.
Do you know when they're on vacation?
Do I know when an employee like Gersonberger...
When all the employees are on vacation?
Yeah, no, I don't know.
The director, the deputies do, but all I'm saying is just use your best judgment, that's all.
Right.
Just use your best judgment.
I do try to do that, because you don't want a commissioner organizing a project without you knowing about it.
Yeah, look, we're all on the same team, everybody's here to, to move Manatee County government, you know, effectively through the day-to-day operations. All I'm asking is just use your best judgment, and again, I'll reiterate, you will probably find that the deputies can get you the answers and get you the connections, you know, pretty quickly. And, and if they don't know what's going on, then I need to know that they don't know what's going on.
Okay, let me know about the Tom Gersonberger example. I use it a lot. If it's a problem, let me know.
Thank you, Commissioner Servia. Commissioner Baugh, you're the last commissioner on the board.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make it quick, Mr. Chair, thank you. I, you know, I, I've been sitting here listening to all of the, the comments, and, and I agree with Commissioner Bellamy with some of the things that he said. It should be consistent with all commissioners. We should all receive an email so that it's very clear. I, I think I felt that, you know, we had a new county administrator coming in trying to change our, the way our government run, runs. He was trying to make big changes, and I felt that it was only fair on my part to try and accommodate his wishes to the best of my ability. I still feel that way, I think they're doing a great job. The deputy county administrators have been nothing but professional, and by communicating with them directly, I'm leaving the directors and staff alone. I, I think sometimes that we commissioners forget that we are not staff. We do not stand side-by-side beside staff. We are to set policy, and we've hired the county administrator, and he's talked to us about what he is trying to do and why, and it's our job to make sure, unless we disagree with it and want to change it, it is our job to not get in his way to try and accomplish his goals. And, and that's how I look at it, and, and let's be honest. Part of the issue has been that we haven't always, commissioners, sometimes we have been issues. We've caused issues by our response to other staff members. We have helped to make things worse, not better, with staff. And I, I think, for me, I, I knew that to be a fact, I've heard it from different people, and I didn't want to be a part of that. I didn't think it was right, I don't think anybody that truly believes that they want this county to be the best it can be, and we're gonna stand and support our administrator and his staff, we would not get in the way and try and accomplish that. I think the ones that were doing that perhaps didn't think it through, or maybe just didn't have our best interest as a government, and, you know, at heart. I don't know. But, I think that that's why things happened the way it did. I think that Commissioner Bellamy hit it right on the nose. It should be communicated to all of us in an email. I do not call staff directly, I do not, I try to, I try to follow the protocol that I've been asked to follow. And I will, if I, like, if I send an email to Charlie Bishop or whomever, you know, I'll send it a lot of times to the director, you know, copy him on it. I always copy my, my assistant. Now, and one last thing, and Mr. Chairman, I'll give the floor back to you. The other thing is, it seems that, you know, there are some people very interested in my calendar. I don't know why, you don't need to be. And I think it's fair to say that we also know that there has been staff members who have given others information, who have been privy to that, to those calendars and emails and so forth. It has caused me great stress in the past, and it's been caused by some of the commissioners. So, I'm sorry, it's not done to be a problem for anybody. No commissioner needs to know my, my calendar. If they want to know, all they have to do is ask me or Teresa. It is open to the public whenever they need it. It's not being kept a secret, but it doesn't need to be given out to commissioners, and nor should staff just be able to arbitrarily look at anyone's calendar. You know, I don't think, I don't have access to the county administrator's calendar, haven't asked for it. I don't have access to Bill Clegg's calendar, gee, and I haven't asked for it. So, and Jan, would you give me yours, though? I want, I really want your... You know, my point is, it's just not information that needs to be shared. So, let's just, you know, tighten up a little bit and realize we're all in the same boat together. We're all sailing down the stream, and, and the stream is getting better, and it's starting to flow better, and things are getting better as a government. And that's what I think we all want to see. So, that's it, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Baugh. And that's the final commissioner on the board for discussion on that matter. Dr. Hopes, you want to move the meeting forward, please?
Yes, so, for planning purposes, I'm gonna take a little break. We've got two more brief sections around the organization, but Chad's got some critical information that, given the conversation, I think you should get a briefing from him about something that I'm sure your constituents are going to talk with you about. With that, we're gonna break from the organizational discussion, and, and he's gonna break the ice on a road closure.
So, good afternoon, again. We got an email this morning, I noticed, and I thought there was an opportunity for me to potentially delay it. It was a notice by FDOT, it's been something that's been coming for a long time. You know, they've been beginning the initial stages of work at the interchange at I-75 in US 301. One of the necessary changes that will ultimately take place there is the closure of the side road, the local road on the water side, the, the south side of US 301 will have to get closed. We got notice today that that is gonna get closed over the week, probably by Monday morning, it said March 7th, so that usually means at midnight, they usually execute those things. And when it closes, it will be closed permanently. So, it is one of those things where we need, my staff is gonna be working with Bill Logan and making sure we get out it in as many modes. As we were digesting the email, and I was actually asking for a favor to say, "Can we delay this or not?" to give a little better notice, I realized that it actually was posted in the Bradenton Herald this morning. So, I'm pretty sure we're pot committed at this point to see that move forward. But I wanted to use this opportunity of it being on TV today or maybe the press paying attention to put some extra notice to that to the public. So, that road, 19th Street East, is where it crosses underneath I-75, will be closing before Monday morning, and it will be closed permanently. There'll essentially be a turnaround cul-de-sac or the ability to, uh-oh, and go back where you came. You just can't use the shortcut to get to Starbucks, McDonald's, or Woody's anymore on your way home.
My question was...
What are we, what are we gonna do if you can't work out?
No.
The first, the first thing I will follow up, if my staff hadn't already done that, was verifying if DOT is gonna add message boards to the off-ramp, I mean, to 19th. If they're not going to, we'll go ahead and put message boards up, because most of the time, the people that live there or work there know, but just people that drive by, unless you put the message boards up, they never see it.
Okay, Commissioner Bellamy is the only commissioner on the board. Commissioner Bellamy.
All right, so what we're talking about is what we call the bike way in, 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 in the community and district, too, as we leave the Waffle House or in Real Oster Bar, and we go straight through the light, and then you're going around...
Underneath.
Yeah, yeah, but not, once you get on the other side of 75, it is. Yeah, I'm, I'm headed, I'm headed there. So, when we go up under the bridge, right there by the golf cart, oops, golf cart store where they sell the golf carts, and make that right, where does the, the shutdown stop at? Is it, is the shutdown stopping prior to Whiskey Joe's? Or is this, or the shutdown, in, the River View, that's the River Room.
He's gonna call, he's gonna call up the map.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, boss.
He's gonna call up the map.
I'm just trying to, I just want to make sure it's clear.
So, the, the question is directed towards...
I'll definitely send you all the map, but it's literally underneath I-75 is... You get to it from the west, and Woody's you get to from the east. So, literally, it's only closed underneath the interstate right here.
I think that answers the question.
Right, so for traffic beating purposes, that's no longer be an, an option.
One of the fastest changes I'll have to implement is my Route 1 bus route currently uses 19th, so we'll have to adjust to use 301.
And a quicker way to access Ruby Tuesday's, Chili's, and, you know, that Walgreens back there, you can't go that way anymore.
You really pound the pavement at that intersection.
Well, that's my area.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
Right, exactly, I mean, that's the area, all right.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Butzo, Dr. Hopes.
Okay, real quickly, I will turn this over to our Director of Development Services, if you approve what we just talked about today.
She's doing a great job.
May I click it for you, you got it?
Jan, Jan's a good clipper.
Okay, thanks, Jan, all right. So, to start off, Lee and I made a pact that one, that neither of us would overshadow each other, and so we worked through the briefs to make sure they were consistent. But then I brought a prop, and he was upset, but I saw you wore your special boots, so we're even, okay? I'm not wearing a fancy outfit, so, okay. All right, so, um, this is all, all part of the rebranding concept. So, when I started here, you know, obviously, hearing about the name Bads has a negative connotation, and so I wanted to change that and sort of, you know, be a new start, you know, a fresh start, so to speak, with coming in with new technological advancements that we'll share, and, you know, really focusing on making things more efficient in building and development services. So, part of that, and, and the first concept was changing the name, and so, we proposed changing the name to Development Services. It's easier to say, more concise, which is really the message that I want to send to the community. We're here to make things more efficient, the name is shorter. So, that was sort of my concept there. Okay, so with that, again, I, you know, I don't do any less because I have less divisions, but again, I wanted to make it very clear to the public what we do. And so, we limited it to five departments. Building, what was that? Oh, sorry, five divisions, I'm sorry. Building, Planning and Zoning, Comprehensive Planning, Code Enhancement, which is a new department that Dr. Hopes alluded to earlier, and then Administration, which includes Fiscal, HR, and Business Services, who I have with me. Lacey chairs that. So, you know, part of the intent was, again, just really, well, we'll be updating the website, we'll be doing updates to everything, and the intent, when you navigate to the website, is to make things clearer for the public and help navigate them through the permitting process and through the planning process, which can be really hard, you know? I don't want people to have a PhD, have to have a PhD to figure it out. So, next slide, thanks, Jan, sorry about that. So, our motto, since we don't have building in the name anymore, I wanted to really reiterate that we're building with the community, partnering and collaborating with the citizens and, and developers in our county to make things happen. And so, I'm committed to delivering superior customer service. That is through, again, making things more efficient. We'll talk about in the next slide Code Enhancement and, and what we're gonna do there with working with the community to improve the environment, you know, that, that everyone lives in. And then also, the third point is, we want to leverage technology to enhance customer experience. And so, using Acela, changing different things, Lacey's been a huge integral part of that. So, next slide. Okay, so Code Enhancement, we are looking, so Code Enforcement moved to Public Safety when I took over, I know a little bit before that, like, in the fall or whatever. So, it took, you know, they moved to Public Safety, and we realized... So it took, you know, they moved to public safety, and we realized that we lost a huge capability there. There was a gap, you know, Rob and Planning, and I've got Bill Palmer in Building, they're inundated with the day-to-day calls from Code Enforcement, because we're partnering with them to try to solve problems, you know? And so it, it definitely became a capability gap. So with the introduction of Code Enhancement, which, by the way, I'm, I'm developing in my own department with the billets that I, with the positions that I already have, so no new positions added, I will be creating a separate department of individuals who will handle certain things related to land development code and comprehensive plan and building code.
Division.
Sorry, oh, division. I'm a department, they're divisions. At my old job, it was the opposite, so it still gets in my head. But, um, yes, so my division's Code Enhancement will have a separate division within Development Services. Okay.
Next slide?
Yeah, next slide is fine. So with that, this is really a teaser brief, because we'll be coming back on May 3rd to talk about all of the exciting things that they're doing, we're doing, because there's a lot more than just this. But I wanted to show one exciting thing that we want to start using immediately, as we just got the new signs in. So you may have been familiar with our old, old public hearing signs, and I brought one today. So we put these out on the property when there's an upcoming public hearing. This was a huge issue, because whenever I want to update it, or the building, you know, the, the date changes, or someone wants to know more information about the project, this only gives limited information. Furthermore, I have to get this actual stuff printed on the slide, which costs about $30 just for the printing alone on the yellow slide. Lacey, do you want to come up here? And then also, yeah, so we've got, so you've got Lacey, Lacey Pritchard here, and we've got Natalie Chapucio from my department, and they have put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into this development, as has Deb in property manage, in records management, but under Charlie. And so Deb will be here on Thursday. We plan to bring this also to the land use meeting, but come on over. And so this is, this is the new, what it'll look like. And so we've got Deb's shop actually prints this sticker on there, and this code right here in the corner, your cell phone, you can actually take a snapshot. So it directs you to, and you'll, you can see here, it'll direct you on a map of the exact project. It'll give you all of the updated information with when the actual hearing dates are. It also, if you zoom out of the map, you can look at every single highlighted area that has a public hearing current in red. So it shows the entire map. And so this is just a really exciting thing that my team's working on, and there's a lot more efficiencies that are coming, but just really an exciting one that's here now. So I wanted to share that.
I have a quick question about this.
Commissioner Cruz has a quick question.
Real quick question, is there a way of accessing, is there like a GIS where someone can just go and look at all of the red areas of all the GIS, or do you have to scan it?
So it'll, it'll actually be on our website also for our project list, so it'll always be available, so they don't even have to look at us, pass by a sign and QR code it. And I wanted to make sure we did collaborate, a big, this was a huge group project. IT GIS was instrumental in this also, so it's just a very good picture of the whole county working together.
I think people don't give Lacey a lot of credit, but she's Business Services, and that doesn't really, that, that title, some people are like, what does that mean, right? Well, she really does everything. She puts all the pieces together. She knows every process that goes on in our department, and then how they interact with other departments, because that's really a key point, too, is that we interact every day with Public Works and with Code Enforcement and all kinds of different departments, so...
And Natalie. We got to get, Natalie started, was, this was her brainchild. She took, she heard you guys, and she took the, well, I don't want to say the word, leadership, and she did a lot of the research, the initiative, exactly. So we thank Natalie.
Yeah, thank you, Natalie.
Yes, that's it. Yep. So any other questions?
Is that map live now?
Yeah, you actually can go, you, we'll leave this up here, you can scan it, and then go to it right now, and you can see the properties.
I'm saying, is there a link on like the homepage that someone can go on? Because right now, like, the, the problem with scanning that is you drive, and you see a yellow sign, and you go, oh crap, but you can't scan, but if you know there's a sign in that vicinity, then you can go to the map.
So we kind of were waiting. It's live, but it's not live on our website yet, on our Development Services page, but we were waiting for you guys to say you love it.
Love it.
Love it.
All right. I'll get it taken care of.
Commissioner Satcher, and then Commissioner Servia.
Great job. That is, that's very exciting, and that's one of those things that so many times with government, you realize there's inefficiencies, and then you realize, well, maybe it's in the government's best interest to be inefficient in that, maybe they're trying to make things hard on citizens, and what a great demonstration of doing the opposite, of saying, look, sure, if we do a good job of putting up this sign, it might mean that 25, 50 people show up with, you know, mad at us, but we're going to do it anyway, because the people deserve to know, and transparency, and getting the information out there. I'm really impressed, that's exciting. And to that point, we do get the complaints about, you know, am I supposed to pull over to go look at that sign, because it's a, you know, a busy road? But now, they'll be able, if they just know there's something about what area to look, they can go home, once we link it up on the website, and find, they know where they passed it on the road, and find those projects. So, so that, that's impressive, being responsive to the people, and so I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Satcher. Commissioner Servia.
Yeah, I just want to also say thank you very much. What a great improvement, because I think for 30 years, people have been using markers to laboriously write out everything on those signs. Why were we doing that? Yes, stickers are the way to go, it's much more time-efficient, and clear, and easier to read. And Courtney, I just want to say to you, I appreciate so much your commitment to public service and customer service. And the customer is everybody in the community. It might be a builder, it might be a general contractor, or an HOA president, or even a citizen at home. They're all our customers, right? So I really appreciate that you're taking the lead on that with that attitude.
I appreciate that, and I should also say that I've got a great team backing me, and, you know, I have to also serve their needs as well, and so just thank you all for all your help and, and, and support for, for my staff, for, you know, making me look good. So, thanks all.
Thank you, Commissioner Servia. Commissioner Whitmore.
Real quick, I want to thank you. I had to give her, I usually don't call the departments directly about complaints, and she, I gave her an Italian contractor, last name of Agnelli, and she handled them pretty well. I warned her, and she handled them pretty well, and actually, he had some points that we need to make major changes. So I want to thank you for handling them, because he's very difficult.
It's, it's one fellow Italian to another one, so I think I had the...
New York, New York Italian at that. He's a tough, tough character. And Courtney, as I told you at dinner last night, I'm hearing nothing but positive things around town about you, and it sounds like everything's going really well, so. Yes, ma'am. Okay.
All right, our last department, Lee Washington.
For today.
For today. Good afternoon, Lee Washington, the Director of Neighborhood Services, for hopefully another 10 minutes or so. We want to present you the first look into the reorganization and rebranding of the Neighborhood Services Department. Jan? I can't see behind me, I'm sorry. Go back one.
You look at the one over there.
Yeah. All right. So the name that the county administrator shared with you is Community and Veteran Services. We decided on this name to change the focus on our core mission, to provide the information and services to our community, and to keep the promises made to our military veterans and their families. Next slide. We've realigned the department to give it a more simplified structure with a more intentional mission. As you can see, we've begun with community development, and we've anchored ourselves with Veteran Services. Veteran Services is now manned and managed by our new County Veteran Service Officer, Mrs. Renee Medina. You've all met Renee, she was also the Employee of the Month in January of 2021, so very happy about that. And we've also consolidated the Aging, Children's, and Adult Services into Human Services Division. These programs have a direct, direct focus in grants and services to assist our most vulnerable citizens. Next slide. So the, the mission that we have in Neighborhood Services, soon to be Community and Veteran Services, is to change our mindset and our direction from outreach to engagement to our community. As many of you know, when we speak about outreach, we're thinking about the individuals that we're reaching out to as outsiders and bringing them in, and that's just not our mindset in our department. We want to be engaging with the community, building those relationships, if you will, making our community stronger. So with the information we've gained from your guidance, the county administrators, administrators' direction, and the ask from our citizens, we're transitioning from community outreach and community engagement, and this is our call to action. The opportunity to put into place the things that make our work more impactful, and we will provide more in-depth perspective as we brief you heavily in the May meeting. And just to give you some ideas of what that looks like, the Ambassador Program is a citizens' program where we can bring in our citizens for an eight-week course, if you will, and speak about Manatee Government 101, the emergency preparedness process, Manatee County Government's Departments, the Board of County Commissioners meetings, how to properly use your three minutes while doing citizen comment, those types of things, to make those individuals who want to interact more with the county government understand how best to do that, and understand how we actually do their business. The, go back to that side, there we are. The extended and standardized hours of Manatee County Libraries and its branches, as we, as you all know, that came before you. Very happy that we're going to be bringing that into phases with the Central and the Braden River Library, going from Monday to Thursday, 9:00 to 8:00 p.m., and then Friday and Saturday is 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., standard across for all the libraries that we have in the county. Also expanding the services for our aging programs, bringing on additional services to also help them both mentally and socially, with some hurricane preparedness kits, and some other ideas for social engagement for our aging communities. And also, one of our largest projects that we have going on is the Veterans Transitional Housing Program that we have across the street. So those are all the things that we want to touch on this afternoon, just as a teaser, but bring to you in May, a more heavily rebranding of the Community and Veteran Services Department, to give you some idea of the initiatives that we want to put forth for the county and its citizens. Any questions for me?
I do not have any commissioners on the board. You have been the most expeditious and, you know, uniting and pleasing speaker that we have had all day. Or perhaps it's 4:30 and we're all just worn down.
It's notes. It's notes.
Yeah. So you have, you have achieved the impossible, sir. There, there are no, no commissioners on the board.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
With that, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, we have completed our work, and now it's up to you. I think the General Counsel has a couple of motions that need to be addressed in public comment, I guess.
There is a requested action item in the agenda item for approval of the name changes, and you could do it as a single motion, you could, if, if that's all right, I'll just...
Would you mind reading it as a single motion?
Yes, sir. It would be, I move to approve the name change of Building and Development Services to Development Services, and to approve the name change of Neighborhood Services to Community and Veteran Services.
So we have a... And then what about, what about the reorganization?
I don't see that in the agenda item. I wasn't sure if you wanted to present that for approval today.
Yeah, we need to.
We can.
We need to, otherwise the clerk won't move things around.
Okay.
You could do that on one motion, too, so.
We could. Do you want me to add that into the same motion?
Yeah, as presented and discussed.
And to approve the reorganization of the county departments as presented by the county administrator to the board in this meeting.
Yeah.
So will the mover and secondor.
We all agree, right?
Who, who motioned this?
You got to do it first.
Was it Servia or Carol?
Me and George.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Whitmore, and a second by Commissioner Cruz. I'll go to public comment, and then Commissioner Discussion. I'll open this up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to speak on this specific agenda item? Seeing no one, we'll go to the phone. Seth, please tell me that we don't have anyone from this morning calling in.
We do not have any callers.
Okay, no callers. Closed public comment. I'll go to Commissioner Debate and Discussion. Commissioner Satcher is on the board.
All I had, I was going to mention this to Dr. Hopes later, but now that we're voting on it, I guess it needs to be now. So the thought of adding to Development Services being strategic Development Services instead of just Development Services. So if it's just me that would like that change, then we'll move on, but if there's four more commissioners that like that change, then we could amend the motion.
I don't see any other commissioners on the board. Okay, no other commissioners on the board.
He wants to add the word strategic.
He wants to add the word strategic. Commissioner Satcher.
The, part of the reason is, I don't know about you, this probably doesn't happen, but sometimes I get criticized that, oh, all we're doing is serving developers. And so the point is to say, look, it's not just to, you know, to serve development, it's a strategic, we got a plan, we're working it, we may say, you know, they may say no sometimes, they may say yes sometimes. That's my, you know, it's almost like a, anyway, that, that's my thought, but it's not, definitely not a hill I want to die on. I was going to say it offline to Dr. Hopes.
I understand. Commissioner Servia is on the board.
I appreciate the reason that you brought that up, I do, and that's why I said to Courtney when she was up there, that I appreciate her attitude and leadership towards customer service, because the customer is not just the builder, the developer, the contractor, it's the HOAs and the citizens as well. And I, and I don't know that, you know, we've necessarily focused on HOAs and citizens